Make sure all the mics are on green.
Good evening, everyone. Before I call the meeting to order, I just want to make a few comments, if you don't mind, if you'll indulge me a little bit. I've been getting several phone calls regarding my absence over the last couple of months, and I just want to tell everyone that at the August meeting, I was on vacation with my wife, who said it was well needed. And then last month, I was, I had a conflicting meeting that took me a little bit late, which didn't allow me to make it on time. I informed Vice Chair Chapman of the incident. I was actually on my way here when, due to some unforeseen events, the meeting was abruptly ended. So I just want to let everybody know that's why I wasn't here. I will plan on being here at all the meetings and continuing to fulfill my obligations. So with that, I will call the meeting to order and ask the court to please read the roll.
Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Arcan?
Here.
Beloit?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
All right, welcome all to this work-study session of Independent School District 624. And with that, we will open up with our opening school report. Dr. Casper Jack.
All right, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. We have a slew of teammates who are going to come before you and provide an update on the beginning of the school year. So we'll kick it off with our Teaching and Learning Department. Looks like Jen is going to lead us on.
Great. Thank you.
Introduce yourself, maybe, as we start.
Oh, yeah, yeah, great, great. Good evening, Jen Babbas, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And I am here to just talk a little bit about our Teaching and Learning summer updates. So over the course of the summer, we had some student experiences. You'll see pictured, in August, we had a group of 30-plus high school students who were trained to become mentors to our middle school students at Walt Summers Park Middle School and Central Middle School. And the Anchor Mentor Program, the purpose is to help students transition to high school. Erin Turner, our Academic Achievement Specialist, is our program leader. You will also see in the bottom left-hand corner, we hosted an autonomous vehicle camp. And our Career Pathways Automotive Instructor Derek Duscher was there to help represent White Bear Lake area schools. And then we also have our instructor Dan Rossiter, who was able to help out and lead our annual Minnesota Trades Academy that you'll see over in the right-hand corner. We also had professional learning for our administrators and for our teachers. Some things that are, I won't go through all of those, but you'll see in the middle there, we had some administrators and White Bear Lake Area Schools instructional leaders being trained in adaptive schools. We learned protocols on decision-making, group dynamics, and how to lead effective meetings. And then in June, we had over 50 educators participate in our dyslexia simulation, which showed participants firsthand the challenges and frustrations students who struggle in school may experience. We also did some curriculum work and some standards work as we look at the new standards in both physical education and also in music education. And then also, we had our grading for equity. Over a dozen of our teacher leaders were able to participate at that summer institute. And then finally, as you all know, and you can see in the picture with our White Bear t-shirts, we had our new educator induction. Just something I want to highlight that really was was new this year, our instructional coaches and our PD Coordinator Dave Lamours really collaborated and designed a new learning experience for new educators to the district. We received feedback from leadership and previous educators and how we could personalize things a little bit more. And so we included some breakout sessions this summer, and they were on co-designing learning spaces. We looked at teen mental health and how to establish relationships with games and humor, just to name a few.
Excuse me, Ms. Babbas, just before we go on, you mind if I just open it up and make sure, make sure if anybody has any questions, we can ask those now? On the Minnesota Trades Academy, I have just one quick one. How did that turn out? Did we get the result that we wanted? And was there some good feedback there?
As always, I think our students really appreciated the opportunity and Mr. Rossiter as the lead with that. Definitely, it was a great experience for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the activities. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Thanks for having me. My name is Brian Pellican. I'm the Director of Activities and Athletics at the high school. Couple of updates as we begin the school year 2122. In the fall, we currently host nine Minnesota State High School League sports. We have 513 participants currently participating in those sports, which is by far the highest number that we've had in my five years here at White Bear Lake. So that's really exciting. We currently are offering 48 clubs that are non-state high school league sports. We like to believe we've got something for everyone, and we have several students involved in that. And we also have different clubs that are being started and going through the process of inauguration as we go through the school year. For me, the most exciting thing for us, for those of you that have been in attendance, are our home football games. And just the fact that it's so much more than just a football game involving our student athletes that participate in football between between our participants in football, our pep band that comes out, our dance line, our cheerleaders. We have over 250 students actively participating in those events on a Friday night. And that's, I think that's something to behold. And it isn't even necessarily the norm across the metro. So something very special to White Bear Lake that I'd like to note. Every year, we continue to do coaches' professional development and help them get together and engage in work, help them become more effective, education-based coaches. We talk about the administrative side of coaching a lot. Many of them come in. Their struggles, their concerns, their questions are not necessarily particular to the actual sport that they are in charge of or the students that they work with. But it's the administrative side of things, whether it's communication, dealing with their finances and budgeting, being transparent, dealing with social media has obviously become a big-ticket item when working with our kids, and continuing to be more efficient and effective in working with parents and communicating with them. It's a chance for our coaches to connect. It doesn't happen real often. Everybody is real busy and so on. We can get them all together. It's an exciting time to work with our leaders and our coaches. We have a couple of new things trying to move into the 21st century out of our office. Hometown Ticketing is an online ticketing service that we are working with and using. Couple of benefits to it is a reduction of necessary staff as we are getting to a point where we are struggling to necessarily find workers for our events for various reasons. This has allowed us to not be scrambling event by event, week by week. And the big thing, especially for me on Friday nights, is because there's no trash cans for cash transfer, that's less cash changing hands on night for both our workers and for me to have to worry about at the end of the night. And then the second one that we're working with, we've worked with technology in our transportation department on BusHive. And that's an online transportation request that kind of eliminates our office as the middleman and works to make transportation requests more efficient, especially, again, with a shortage of bus drivers and all that's going on with transportation right now. It's nice to be as efficient as we can and to work online rather than paper copies, which was the way we used to do it. So a couple of things that are making us more efficient and going into the 21st century. Couple of interesting tidbits from last year, obviously. It was a whirlwind of a year, very different from the norm, as you can see from the pictures regarding masking and different situations, all things COVID. We learned to adapt and evolve even so much as learning about spectator regulations on any given day. Those changes could happen immediately with the State High School League and just dealing with different COVID and masking situations with our spectators, our coaches, our athletes. Live streaming became a priority. We got heavy into live streaming, all of our events. And I guess my biggest success that I'm excited to report is we made it through the entire winter sports season without a single shutdown, which is an absolute anomaly across the metro to not have a single team from a single program shut down. So that was, I think that speaks to our coaches and our athletes and what they were able to do and accomplish with COVID. And then obviously, weather threw us a curveball. My favorite picture is the lower left-hand corner. That's the beginning of October. If you can remember that snowstorm that we got that that October day, you know, the facilities guys plowed all night and then stuck around to help us clear the turf. And then Matt St. Martin, my associate AD, and myself spent about four hours that day cleaning and sweeping off the bleachers with the facilities guys to make sure that we could safely have a home football game that night. So it was, it was crazy.
And the first day of October is spring.
Right? So we're there, and it's looking great. It's looking beautiful. No snow in the forecast. So again, it was a great year. It was exciting to be able to have the activities that we had with COVID, and we're excited to be back to normal. So thank you very much.
Questions for Mr. Pellican? You know what, I just wanted a question that I have, and it's more of an observation. I'm super close at those football games also. And one of the great things, I think, is great stuff, is the community involvement, especially around the youth football program. So I would encourage us to continue to do that work. That's great stuff for the kids to see that one day they'll be playing on that field. And that's, you should see the smiles on their faces that jumping around. So really appreciate that outreach.
Thank you.
Ms. Beloit?
Why do you think we were able to make it through the winter without a shutdown?
I think our coaches and our student athletes understanding the things that needed to be accomplished in order to get through the winter. I truly do. And luck.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Better folks next.
Operations?
Yeah, we'll go into the operations end of things. Typically, you know, you know, things are going successful with operations when you don't hear about them. So it's kind of the offensive line of a school district, right? Transportation is one of those areas that's been a real challenge for us. It's been a real challenge across the state with school districts trying to find drivers. As you know, we run a combination of our own bus service, where we have, we own some vehicles, and we have drivers that run some of our vehicles. But the majority of our transportation is provided from vendors. First student being a primary vendor. We have several other vendors, type three, the vans. We have multiple vendors who provide transportation in those areas. And so we went into the year a little thin on our staffing, but where we thought we could handle it. And right before school started, our vendors started turning back routes to us and telling us we aren't going to be able to run all the routes we promised to. And so we're left with those routes, and our staff has been spread thin. And kudos to our, everyone in our transportation department. They've been working hard. They've been, everyone's just working together to make it work. We're down five drivers just in White Bear Lake, plus our vendors are down. And so our office staff and mechanics have been helping out driving routes. So that's put a lot of pressure on our transportation department, because every year, they get a lot of phone calls and messages, and they're out on buses driving routes. So they just don't have the manpower to return all those phone calls. And people have been really patient, but certainly some have been frustrated with not being able to get those returned phone calls, you know, when they would have expected it. So we thank our public for being patient with their transportation department. They're just doing outstanding work. But there's certainly a lot of challenges. Like every industry, finding employees is not easy, and bus drivers is not, you know, it's not the most attractive job for everyone, because it's a high-pressure job with a lot of responsibility. Regarding nutrition services, of course, they had a big year last year as learning models changed, and they were able to provide meals to students not only in school, but then as we were at home, making sure that we provided meals to students at home. Thank you to our nutrition staff and our drivers, who all worked together to make that happen. In the end, they served over a million meals, 1.1 million meals last year. They were also successful securing grants, over half a million dollars in grants. And those grants were approved by the board throughout the year. So you've seen those, but they're listed up there. When you see it all, in its total, you recognize what an outstanding year nutrition services had and the great work that they did. So right now, again, their serving meals are free, and students can eat breakfast and lunch. And they're doing that en masse. We have a lot of students taking us up on those free meals. And so we're working hard. There again, global supply chains have really impacted nutrition services. So the food that our vendors were able to provide us in the past, they're just able to provide a fraction of the choices that they provided. So every, every menu that comes out, we place, place an order, and we get kicked back dozens and dozens of items that we can't, the vendors cannot provide us. So then we're changing up menus, and so people should probably be looking at those menus pretty regularly, because they're changing a lot as the supplies are unavailable. Still, well-balanced meals and plenty of food. So we're continuing to make sure every student gets fed. We're down about 10 physicians in nutrition services. So there again, we have people pitching in and doing extra work and just making sure the work gets done. Facilities, I'm gonna spend just a little bit of time on. We had, what do we have, one, two, three, six projects that were to be completed by the time school started. And all of those projects were completed, and school opened on time. The first one out of the chute was the transportation facility that we took possession of in July. That's up on the top photo. And that has been functioning just outstanding. They're real happy with it. And then all of our school sites opened right on, right on time. I would point out, some of people have been to South Campus and saw the gym addition. Just a reminder that that gym addition was necessary because we were moving a middle school there, and more gym space will be needed for the middle school. But it's been a great addition for our game day experience, because we don't have to have Jiffy Jans outside for those who need a facility. So the restrooms in that new gym are doubling as stadium restrooms, and it's created an opportunity to open up more plaza in front of our stadium, taking some pressure off the congestion of the entrance to the stadium. And we'll talk about all of those projects when we do our facilities presentation in just a few minutes. And so as you know, we have three, two projects underway. The South Campus Classroom Edition has begun. The high school is in full force, as you've seen the earth moving at that school. We'll learn more about that in a few minutes. And then we've had solar installations at a number of buildings. And those are continuing. And that is it for facilities.
Sure. Well, I had just had a quick comment, if you will. I was, had the opportunity, I was at a football game, and the facilities are great, and there seems to be a good amount of traffic. But then I was back for a Saturday football game, and the facilities were not open. So we could just kind of figure that piece out. I know there's a lot of parents that would appreciate that.
Oh, sure. All right, yeah, thanks. What, was that a late game on Saturday?
It was a JV game on a Saturday.
At what time?
Like a 10 o'clock game.
10, oh, it was a morning game?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good to know. Thank you.
Or is there any questions regarding the building, the operations? Okay. Go on.
All right. Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the school board. I would like to highlight some of the different areas that our department has been working on this year. This summer, at our extended school year programming, we partnered with different community vendors to bring in different field trip experiences to our site. And so you'll see here that we had our OTs from St. Kate's come in, and they did an outside sensory day for our students. We had a magician come, as well as a yo-yo expert come. And then, as you see here by their smiles, we had an ice cream truck come. And so we got a lot of positive feedback from our parents, and our students were really excited to participate this summer. The other area is our social-emotional learning. And as we continue to move that work forward, we partnered with our SummerU on implementing Second Step Summer Curriculum. So in those SummerU programs, we were able to implement all those different SCL activities. And we did the training with the staff, as well as providing the curriculum. Our Second Step is now implemented in all our elementary schools. And we're excited to announce that community education now has Second Step in their before and after-school childcare. And so all our students are starting and ending their days with SCL activities. And we continue to promote our staff self-care through conscious discipline and the different activities that we're doing here. And you'll see at our opening that we had a photo booth set up, and we have lots of pictures that we're sending out to our staff, and they really enjoyed that day. Lastly, I'm really excited about this new venture that we have at our Transition Education Center. As you might notice here, Prag-Nasvik is helping us with this work, and we're setting up a Health and Wellness Skills class for our students. So trying to get those outdoor activities and those health, health and wellness activities embedded in their school days so that they can take those out into the community. Any questions? Yes?
Can you just briefly describe just some of the things that surround the Second Step curriculum? What does it involve?
Yeah, so it's different types of social-emotional learning activities that they're doing, and then the teachers are embedding those in different parts of the day. And then through our conscious discipline. So that's the actual curriculum, spoken sequence curriculum. And then our teachers are also trained in conscious discipline, and that's how they actually respond and implement those activities throughout their day.
So what would be like an example of one of those things? Things they're teaching through the Second Step?
Yeah, they might be looking at how to regulate themselves, talking about how they can actually recognize where they're at on a scale, and then figuring out which activities were best for them to help emotionally regulate them through the day so that they're prepared for learning.
Okay.
Yeah?
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the work you guys are doing. It's great stuff. So next is technology.
Good evening, members of the board, Chair Mullen, Steve Asper, Director of Technology and Innovation, here to share some updates with you. First, I'd like to share a little bit that we were very excited this summer to have our Summer Tech Depot back with us again. We had over about 31 student workers work almost 1,300 hours cleaning old Chromebooks, enrolling new Chromebooks for our system, and helping us to get parts wired and everything we needed to get all the devices ready for this school year. In addition to that, they helped us with getting some of the Chromebook distribution ready to go. And Chromebook distribution looks a lot different now than it did even just a couple of years ago in the fall, because of what we learned last summer in 2020 with COVID, all students kept their Chromebooks over the entire summer. And we had such a great success with that, and students took care of those devices, that we were able to do that with over 2,600 students this summer, this past summer as well, reducing how many we hand out in the fall and just speeding that whole process along. Our technology department staff have been busy with all kinds of projects and pivots and adding new platforms. And one of the biggest things we've done was is around infrastructure improvements. Some of the highlights include our extension to our fiber backbone, where we extended our path from one of our current elementaries to our new elementary site, as well as the new transportation center. And as we were going right past the TEC program, we were able to connect them with fiber as well, which really improves the performance and the experience that those students and staff have at that site. And we're not maintaining a whole separate network system just for that program. You know, and we have a lot of other infrastructure improvements that we did this past year, and a lot of those behind-the-scenes improvements that few people really see, but everybody benefits from on a daily basis. And they're really centered around hardware and some Wi-Fi access, as well as building security. And another thing I wanted to highlight was just the collaboration success that we had this year, working really together with Teaching and Learning Department, as well as the Distance Learning Academy staff and principal. It was not a small task to implement a new school into all of our systems in a short timeline. And working together, we were able to do that. We accommodated students from other school districts, enrolling even after the start of the school year. We were able to get them the technology needs that they needed to participate in the program. And we even developed a new tech model for teachers to teach in that new environment. There were all kinds of other behind-the-scenes things that had to happen with our systems that needed imports and changes and reconfiguration. Some even required contract renegotiation. And so it was, but it was this collaboration of work that made all of this possible to support the evolving needs of our families in real time. So I'll just end by talking about a couple of ongoing and upcoming projects that we're working on in the tech department. One is our Cyber Bears Aware Campaign. This is a cybersecurity campaign that involves updating passwords, that's something you've heard about already this fall, and also cybersecurity awareness in general for staff. Additionally, we're in the process of evaluating new student information system platforms. Our current system, Skyward, that contract is up next summer. And so we're looking for a more robust platform that will fit our evolving needs as the district strives to meet all the goals of our strategic. And then finally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our Space Campaign, or that this past spring and summer, we had four elementary schools that were the first sites in the district to go through the new future furniture selection and learning space professional development. So this is about much more than just furniture. It's the adaptability of this furniture that is a catalyst to create a culture where students can co-design with their teachers, the learning spaces, and that supports our district vision of student agency. So we're excited to continue that process with the rest of our elementary schools this fall, as well as our secondary schools, and we start Thursday night. So as you can hear, from devices and infrastructure to new school development and staff development, we get to do a lot of fun projects in the tech department. So thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, Steve, just curious in terms of, I know we're moving to multi-factor authentication, and also you've got the cybersecurity campaign. Anything else that the district is doing from a software, hardware end to take proactive preventative steps to make sure, or try to make sure that we don't get, uh, run into some water attack or any other type of cyber attack that would lock us down?
Yeah, we are. We're, we're, we talk frequently with both our cyber insurance company from that standpoint, who really helps us out in an event of a cyber event. We also work, are working with our firewall company that supports all of that protection as well. We also know that end-user awareness is really important. And so that's, some of that campaign is going to focus on that piece as well. And then we have an internal team in the tech department, a security team that we meet monthly to do a constant analysis of our, our cybersecurity profile.
Thanks.
Hey, do anybody else? Dr. Arcan?
I just have a couple of questions, and I don't know if we can answer them. But looking at the 31 student workers, were they there with them because of an interest in doing it? And if they were, how are we exposing them to the cybersecurity, the A-plus, that kind of networks, whether they can actually get, make a living of it?
Absolutely. We've seen this, well, first of all, the students are made aware through our Tech Depot programs that we have in the secondary schools during the school year. We didn't have that last year. We're just starting to ramp that back up again. So they gain interest through that. And then those, the experience they have, we do connect them with different places. And then we work with our career pathways. So that's really kind of that entry-level test waters kind of experience for them, to see if that's something they want to go through a little bit.
Certainly, we need them.
Yeah, absolutely. We need a lot. Thank you.
Dr. Newmaster?
I'm just wondering, with all the talk we've had lately about the impact of Facebook and Snapchat, and all of the ways our kids enjoy using technology, and it's sometimes not as positive as people sometimes not as positive as people would hope. How does district deal with the usage of that? Is there any particular, I guess, resource that is not used or is everything used by the kids?
So we do block all of our, all social media for students on our network.
During the day?
During the day. So, and even on their Chrome Books if they're at home, that would be blocked as well. So they would have to use a personal device in order to do that.
Well, I wondered if that was successful, so.
I can say for my children, yes.
Yes. My children too.
Ours too.
Yeah. It can also be frustrating with our sites if they need to get to, to get, kind of put it in the wrong bucket, but yes, it works.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. We'll now move to equity.
Good evening, school board members, community members and students. I am here, Marcella Davis, Director of Equity Engagement, to talk a little bit about some of the updates that transpired over the summer with the equity department. And for those that may not be familiar, our equity department is one year old and was compromised or comprised under the leadership of Dr. Wayne Kazmicek last year. So not only was my position a year old and established last year, but the department was as well. So many of my updates are going to speak about the three components that make up the equity department, which is American Indian education, our family engagement work and our educational equity specialist. So I'll start with our American Indian education. September 7th, 2021, we had our annual kickoff to the school year. It was held at Stillmucker Park, which is an annual event where we have drums. We gave out some school supplies and we just really want to set the tone contextually for the upcoming school year with our American Indian Indigenous students. So that was held there. On that same day, we also brought in our newest hire for American Indian education. For those that are not familiar, Jordan Dickerman, who was previously in the position as American Indian Cultural Liaison, has transitioned to another role and she's doing great things with, in her new role. And so that role was open and Sherry Gill is our new American Indian Education Program Specialist. She goes by the name of Uswee Wee. Her background is she was an educator in St. Paul for a couple of years. She is an artist by trade and she most recently came to us via the Federal Bureau of Indian Affairs. And lastly, I wanted to inform everyone that our elder, Hope Flanagan, has agreed to work with us again this year. And one of the things that are most imperative for American Indian Education Program is assuring that we have an elder to provide guidance for the program. And going to transition to my family engagement. For two days, August 28th and August 30th, we had a kickoff extravaganza for community members and families as we are always working to adhere to the strategic goals and priorities of making sure that all our students are equipped and have a unique, important imperative, positive experience in the White Bear Lake area schools. We wanted to make sure that our families had multiple community resources that they could tap into with collaboration with St. Andrews Church as well as the Bear Killer Clinic and numerous other internal community education and local resources where in a one-stop-shop fashion for families to come get anything that they need, also including vaccinations if they need it, as important things that will adhere to their children's educational success. So backpacks, pencils, protractors, calculators and things of that nature, they came at no expense. And this came about by collaboration, like I said, with outside resources like St. Andrews. So really want to give a shout out to St. Andrews as well as the Bear Killer Clinic, please, or in, in really providing this opportunity, we gave, gave over, excuse me y'all, this is quite difficult to speak, it's kind of tight on my lips. We gave over 400 backpacks and countless vaccinations as well as other things provided by community members. And that was headed up by Brianna Santos Coy, who is in the role of Family Engagement Coordinator, as well as Nirvana Yang, he's a Family Engagement Specialist. So we are really trying to connect the dots with family engagement and there will be more great information coming as it relates to family engagement initiatives and future And then lastly, as our newly formed department is really trying to figure out ways to make sure that we are aligned with our strategic plan and some of the initiatives of the district, we have switched the title and elevated the position to Educational Equity Specialist. And some of the nuances really speak to assuring that we're supporting building leaders and supporting building teams with some of the work that's going on around educational equity in our schools as well as partnering with teaching and learning to provide professional developments in different areas. And this year, we have three new positions that have been filled. Syracuse Yang, who was going to be working in our secondary schools, Tom Deca Chiense, who's going to be working in a racially isolated school, which is Willoughby Elementary, as well as again, Sherry Gill, who has a duality in her role as American Indian Education Specialist as well as Educational Equity Specialist. Those are all the updates that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Questions for Dr. Davis? Mr. Chapman?
Not a question, just a comment. It's, it's great to see that we have some staffing up the way it looks, new members on the team. So I like to see that as far as cultural, well, what was called cultural reasons, but yeah, as far as driving up the equity initiative.
Thank you for that. We are excited that these opportunities have been created under the leadership of Dr. Kazmicek, understanding and recognizing the need that we have 16 to 17 buildings that we have to serve and making sure that we're getting out to making sure we're touching the buildings and making sure we're in our faces in front of students and the staff that support our students as well.
Dr. Newmaster?
I'm glad too to see the organization has really firmed up and how many people you involved in providing needed services and connections. I'm just curious, how did you manage to gather people? What was, what did you feel was, as we look at communicating and networking, what do you think was your most successful way of connecting?
Consistency, making sure that there's regularity at the buildings. Not just once a month meetings and again, that's not because, it's not blaming. We just have a priority of making sure that we're consistent to buildings, checking in with students, checking in with volunteers, checking in with teams that our staff will be a part of this upcoming year. Feedback from others, whether it's students, whether it's parents, whether it's colleagues and the work on how the position can be enhanced.
Thank you.
Lloyd?
Have you been able to notice, I mean, I realize you're just a year into some of this, some of this work, but have we noticed an increase in the family participation in these, in these events and are they getting more engaged as well as students?
Good question. As of right now, with, with one of our events, yes, with our American Indian kickoff, it was a smaller turnout, but turnout nevertheless. And it's going to be our commitment to continually developing and cultivating relationship. Sometimes numbers matter, but sometimes the qualitative analysis of what do we need to do differently, differently here and what does consistency look like matter as much as the quantity, how many people show up? What is the quality of the product that we put forth and what is the commitment to consistency even if the turnout is low?
Exactly. I think even if we have these events where you actually have to come to them, that could be a completely different scenario than opposed to, or opposed to maybe the touch points we have with each of these families and checking in with students. I also wanted to add, St. Andrews is a great partner. They do a lot of really, really good work, especially with homeless, so I'm glad to see.
Remarkably well. For one thing, during a really challenging time to be hiring right now, we brought on 170 new full-time employees between the end of last year and this year. And so that's a lot of work on the part of all of our hiring supervisors, all of our program directors, our principals, our APs. So a huge thank you to everyone there for all of the work that they've put in there. As we look at that too, we're always really dedicated to making sure that we're hiring really talented people that are going to be excellent with, with the students or whomever the stakeholders are that they work with. And one part of that too is that we know that we're looking to hire candidates that are going to more closely reflect the demographics of our student base because we know that that's important to our students, to be able to see themselves and the staff that they interact with. You know, we're not necessarily seeking perfection when we're engaging in that pursuit, but, but we continue to move the needle there. And so we were able with our new teacher cohort, 14% of our new teacher cohort identify, identified as candidates of color. Our educational support staff, 26% of our educational support staff hires and then 50% of our licensed administrative staff. And so those are better cohort numbers than we've seen in the past. And that again, a big thank you to everyone doing, doing the work to, to make that happen because what we find is the most impactful, you know, steps that we can take in that regard is to make sure that we're aggressive and we're going to candidates, not just waiting for candidates to come to us. Like I said, you know, our goal every time is to hire the very best candidate and where we have an opportunity to select the very best candidate who also happens to be somebody that's going to help our students see themselves on the staff, that's fabulous. And we made some steps in that direction this year. Then just talking about some of the work that still needs to be done, so some of our continuing work, I think Tim Malt hit on some of this to some extent. We've, you know, we've had some, some trouble certainly extended day bus drivers, nutrition services and our substitute teachers remain our biggest areas of challenge. And to some extent, I would say especially our extended day and our substitute teachers, we're still working really hard to close those gaps where we still have hiring to do. So we're trying to make it happen as quickly as we can and we've been working at it for a long time here. But those are really the areas where we're still lagging compared to where we would like to be. We're trying to take really creative approaches in terms of incentives and making sure that we're watching how we're compensating employees in those areas to ensure that we're competitive in the marketplace. So we're, we're trying to do just about everything that we can, but it's, it's a tough deal right now as it is across the country and across labor markets here. So that's just a bit of an update on kind of continuing work on the hiring side.
Thank you, Mr. Mott. Questions regarding human resources? Mr. Chapman?
That is about the best hiring of people of color that I remember and all the time on the board. I know each board is, has wanted to see more and more of that happen, but those numbers, I don't recall those in the past and we're close to that, so great job. I mean, everybody that's been involved.
No, for sure. We'll keep at it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mott.
Thank you.
Schmar, your community services?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Malin, members of the board. It's always a tough act to follow Mr. Mott's. I mean, I don't speak as smoothly as he does, but I have pictures. Yeah, just a brief overview of what's happening in the world of community services and our early childhood programs this summer, we're starting off. We have roughly, the math is not going to add up when I tell you this number because I think the data, those numbers were put in a little earlier, but we're currently serving 777 early childhood students in our early childhood programming between our half-day and full-day programming. If you remember last year towards the end of the year, we made the decision to transition our bear fund program, which is a preschool program ready for four-year-olds over to early childhood. So all of our early childhood programming is under one umbrella and it's been a good decision. Our need, our, our parents' needs for a variety of different program in between half-time, full-time, two-day-a-week, five-day-a-week, the variety has served us well. Our sections are almost full across the board outside of a small number. We have, just remember, we have early childhood program and of course over at Normandy Park in seven out of our nine elementary schools as well as our Tamarack Nature Center in partnership with Ramsey K. as well as our Tamarack Nature Center in partnership with Ramsey County. And then our new site that we opened up last year and added sections this year for over at North Oaks, at North Oaks Preschool. Things are going very well, and their focus this year is on continued alignment with elementary in the areas of literacy, student support, and, you know, adjusting our standards, all to build a stronger system to prepare our early learners to be kindergarten-ready when they make that next step into the kindergarten.
Great.
Our out-of-school-time programs, which consists of our extended day, Flex, Targeted Services, and Youth Enrichment and Development. You know, we continue to grow. We saw a big jump in participation over the past summer. Our summer programs across the board, our numbers were very, very well-attended in all of our programs, Youth Enrichments, Rec Sports, Extended Day, and Flex. Really great numbers, which shows our, you know, community's willingness to get kids back in programs, the eagerness for us to provide those for them. We're already higher, our numbers in Extended Day currently in the fall are already higher than where we were last year. And that's our, you know, we've had a huge opportunity with us with the school start time change this year. And in addition to what Mr. Monz said, our focus is to continue our recruitment and retention of our high-quality staff to support the increased demand for those program areas. The other change that we made, some adjustments in new programs this year, was in regards to our middle school program. And all these new opportunities came in lieu of our school start time change. So different opportunities to provide middle schools programming in the morning for kids or parents or families that need that support or, you know, assistance in the morning, as well as some different opportunities after school for our middle school kids as well. Our Flex after school, it shifted a little bit, so we do have our morning programs called Breakfast Club. It's for an hour before school at the middle schools, and that is, it is fee-based, but it's as affordable as we could possibly get. It's $5 a day. And our numbers right there between the both sites are around $20.25. And then our after-school Flex program is free for those that have registered. It is a nice collaboration with teaching and learning, as well as Targeted Services and our community health programs to provide free opportunities for our kids after school that kids, sorry, that need those programs for them. And just make sure I'm not missing something here. But yeah, just to wrap up our extended day, you know, the earlier start times did produce a great opportunity for us to support our students academically and social and emotional success, like Ms. Orin explained a little bit earlier, and embedding those in all of our, I mean, all of our extended day and Targeted Services programs after school. Our youth racket middle school athletics, our falls off and running. Again, we had a very great summer with people coming out to participate in our Rec Sports. Always want to give a huge shout-out to all of our parent volunteers for all of our Rec Sports. We could not do it without them. So we have roughly 86 volunteer coaches supporting our Rec Sports right now through flag football and soccer, and then again, a higher number of parents participate to provide coaching expertise for our, you know, Rec Baseball, Softball, T-Ball, Volleyball. We cannot do it without them. We're very thankful for the volunteers and the participation from our families and communities to support that. And then again, our additional option we are offering for after-school for middle school is some intermural options. For $10, students can sign up for a three-week, two-day, two-day-a-week-for-three-week session after school and some various sports and activities that Mr. Rebo has organized. Our next one coming up is Ultimate Frisbee. He's coordinated work with some of our high school club advisors to come down and provide some of these for the kids after school. And another great opportunity that is a direct shuttle after school, being that it's later in the day. We have some buses available to us to provide some shuttles to, directly from Central to Sunrise and then back. Gives us an opportunity, if numbers are low on one end, we can combine schools. We can create opportunities for kids to build those relationships with each other before they are united at the high school level. It's just been a huge asset for us to be able to offer that shuttle to get kids together and make sure programs run after school. And then our adult programs. Again, over the summer, a lot of involvement, and towards the end of June or end of July into August, we really started being able to open up to do more things to get people reunited in person. I think our, a lot of events outside at the senior center, I know some of you attended them, are food trucks, working with the food shelf for our mobile markets and pickups for, as I cited, our parking lot down there, flea market outside. And then getting community involved, too. We have some high school students coming to play outside for the food trucks for live entertainment and other community members. But it just felt really good for people to at least be outside and connecting again as we started to prepare for the school year. Our, remember our community partnership that we worked with, with the food shelf, as well as a community donor that donated money to help the local restaurants, as well as getting foods into the hands of those that need it. We served over 20,000 meals in that program as a community partnership. And our Meals on Wheels, again, another testament to the people in our community stepping up to volunteer their time, especially during a difficult time. We went, we missed one day of home delivery for our Meals on Wheels program throughout the entire pandemic, again, which is a huge testament to people stepping up to provide a service. And as we started to get slowly back into the fall, we've been, our groups in our senior center have been coming back. And then our, our different classes that we provide for them, too, have been coming back online. And our adult enrichment to that as well, a nice balance of inline and, or sorry, online and in-person activities to meet people's comfort levels at that. And then our Many Faces program, our partnership with the larger community. We're up to 17 community partners in that program as a whole. Happy to be one of them. We do have some events coming up here in the next couple of weeks. So if you're interested in seeing what those are, you can check out their website. Many Faces, wblarea.org, and those are available now. So that's a lot to share, so I'm going to leave that.
Dr. Lee Master.
I just have a comment. I'm always amazed at what community service turns out to the White Bear Lake area, and I participated in a lot of those things this year. Many Faces was awesome, and it pulled people in that would probably not have come to a school event because they're just not connected with the schools that way. And some of the senior center events at Normandy Park did the same thing. There were people that came to that that said they had never realized what was going on there. And I do want to shout out to the staff at Normandy, Michelle and John and the rest of them, that all put in incredible amounts of time handing out 20,000 meals and putting on events way over time. So it's an amazing department that I honestly, for many years, never realized how under the radar you were. But that group is awesome in connecting to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Spoiled.
Do you happen to know how many families we serve as Meals on Wheels?
How many individuals right now? I don't, I couldn't, I couldn't give you the current, if I tried to pull a number up to give you current numbers for Meals on Wheels, I'd be trying to pull it out in there, but I could definitely get that to you.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Sharmar.
Thank you.
We'll now move to communications and community relationship update.
Thank you very much, members of the board and community members as well. I'm Marisa Vetti, the Director of Communications. And she's not here with me today, but Tia Quirk is somebody who was recently hired in my office as well. So if you haven't seen her yet, you will see her, I'm sure, behind the camera at some point. We're tracking down a fun story of the student and staff experience here in White Bear. So I'm going to try to outdo Tim by having only one slide, but it's going to have a slew of photos on it at the end, so we'll see how this goes. But just in preparing for the school year, a quick snippet of the things that we've been working on in our office to get information out to our families. The first was our activities calendar that we, of course, mailed to all of our families. If you remember, the communications audit that we did most recently, we heard a resounding "Don't ever take this away." And so we enjoy pulling that together, and I know that families are calling for that as early as July 1st. Of course, my calendar, when am I going to get it? So we were, of course, able to pull that up again this year as well, and will continue to. Our website was and will continue to be the place to go for the most current information that was true of the fall 2021 information and will remain true of COVID-19 information and updates and dashboard and that as well. We also continue to send the back-to-school or beginning-of-the-year letters to families, and so they would have gotten that in-print information mailed to their homes. In addition, we did something this year that we had also done last year in collaboration with the Nutrition Services Office, and we had sent the Free and Reduced Meal applications and the explanation of the educational benefits, that flyer. And I think, I know that Tim would attest to this as well, that our district did really well last year in really encouraging people to sign up for that, even though the meals continued, or were free, and that continues to be the case this year as well. We're really helping families to understand that what is sometimes called the Free and Reduced Lunch Cap isn't just about lunch. It's about many things. And we really have been trying to work with the Nutrition Services Office and help our community understand that and benefit from that as well. So that, again, was in the letters, back-to-school letters for the second year in a row. And I'm hoping that we'll have the same outcome of our families really applying for that and getting the benefits related. Additionally, we, of course, have continued to do translations in Spanish and some in Mung as well. In addition to doing some printed materials, our videos that we share, if you've looked at that, the closed captioning option would always, or always offers the Spanish captioning as well. And then a way that we've communicated in person this year was our convocation event, and of course, we pulled that off differently. But I think that our staff members really enjoyed the opportunity to reconnect and get together once again, of course, with convocation happening in a really different and remote way last year. So that was fun. Something that our community members have participated in has been the hashtag #BackToSchoolBearers. And on Facebook, our families K-12-plus and then our early childhood families as well were able to participate during the weeks that they had their first days of school. And that was really fun to see how people participated in that. And then, of course, our regular communications. I'll do a plug here again as well. The community newsletters that we send out, a text version every other week, and then on the alternating weeks, it's a video version. And then our 624 Facts that we share on social media as well. Information that is fun, highlights of students and alumni and staff, and notices of things happening in the district. And in addition to that, of course, now that the school year has started, the weekend 62.4-second video updates that we do are shared in other ways as well. So keep an eye out, of course, the update of what we did to prepare, but then obviously the ongoing as well.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
So in the back-to-school, the beginning-of-the-school-year letters we send out, those are only sent out in English currently?
No, they're sent in English and in Spanish.
Okay. And then if we have, how many different languages can we? On our district website, you can change it to several. I don't know the number. I know it's a lot.
It is.
Do we have a way of knowing, is there a way that we can ensure that those letters get sent to families in the district, that we know speak those other languages? Like, how would we ever move to make sure that they're getting that letter sent to them in a language that they can read it and understand? I mean, you know, their student might be able to, but maybe the parent or the guardian doesn't?
Yeah.
Is this something we're thinking about doing?
Sure. And we are doing that in the top three languages, if that makes, the Spanish and Mung are the higher concentrations of families that we, that we serve. And so I'll just say anecdotally that we have done Mung translations as well and learned that that actually, that most Mung families would prefer to have it in English. And so we said lessons learned with that one. So that is the reason why the Spanish is sent home, Spanish and English together actually are sent home. And then our Mung-speaking families do get the English. And if there would be a time when somebody would be looking for the information in a different way, we certainly would work with them to make that happen as well. Something, and I should have put this in here, something that we worked on, if you remember, we did many languages. We actually did all of the languages of the school district, and it was the providing families with information that says, "Send me," or "Use the language line to contact me." And so that is a way that families would be able to at least reach out and say, you know, "Dr. Gillespie, I want you to call me, and you need to call me in this language." And then Dr. Gillespie would be able to follow up in that way.
Oh, that's great. And a good thing to learn about the Mung community, that they prefer to have it in, right? We don't know unless we try it, so thank you.
Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Vetti.
Thank you.
Now move to enrollment update.
Sure, thank you. We pull enrollment every year, the first Friday of September, for the first Friday of the first week of school in September. And so we'll take a look at where we came out this year to start the school year and comparing it to where we ended last year, which is an interesting exercise. So I'm going to start at the bottom of this page, and you look at our elementary enrollment and see, September of 2021, we had 3,735 students enroll. Down 26 students from where we ended last year at 3761. If you recall, at the end of last year, as we came back to school, we started Distance Learning Academy for those who are uncomfortable returning to Brooks and Mortar School. We had 598 elementary students in that Distance Learning Academy. Most of those students returned to their elementary school. And so you can see the numbers at each elementary and how their enrollment looks in September compared to the end of last year, and it's quite a bit higher. But when you look at the Distance Learning Academy, you see we have 131 students to start the year in the Distance Learning Academy this year. When we look at secondary, look in the middle school in the blue, and we see that we have 2,023 students. That's down 49 from where we ended the year last year. Interesting about the middle school, the eighth-grade cohort was a large bubble cohort that moved through the system. And so that cohort moved on to ninth grade as a large group. And so as you look below it at North Campus, you can see North Campus is up almost 100 students. And that's based on that cohort moving into ninth grade. South Campus is pretty steady. ALC numbers are, you know, it's just a starting point at ALC, because that adapts throughout the year. Tech numbers are a little higher this year. And then we have 48 students started the year in the High School Distance Learning Academy. So in 912, we're up 162 students from where we ended last year. Factor in the 49 from middle school, we're at 113 students, up 113. Minus 26 at K-5 puts us at a elementary-secondary total of plus 87 from the end of last year. Should be noted that, while we're pleased that that number is larger, is that we budgeted for 8475. And so that's a smaller number than what we built our budget upon this year. And so we'll be bringing the revised budget to the board this winter, as we always do. We're in the middle, I shouldn't say we're in the middle, we're near the end of our auditing process. In about three weeks, we'll wrap that up. And so we can really start to put some good numbers in and preparing that revised budget. But it's reasonable to expect that that's going to result in some budgetary impacts and more cuts for next year than we had anticipated. Any questions on enrollment? Well, we do have early childhood enrollment, and Tim Mauer will bring some context to that. Right now, they're serving, started the year serving 777. Tim?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. There's your numbers.
Yeah, so I can just provide a little bit up to the right-hand side. The E C S E side won't be the area that I can speak to right now, but if we have questions, I'm sure Lisa can come up with. See, I'm sorry. Yeah, so our numbers are up in early childhood, like we, like I shared a little bit earlier. And I think it's just, I mean, we have an array of programming available for families, our variety of programming that's available for half-day and multiple days a week, full-day a week, you know, five-day at last, just provides a great opportunity. So I think we were very fortunate for, to be able to provide that and have those spaces in our buildings and communities for families to come in. As I said, we do have available sections still in some of our full-day and half-day programming, so we do have room for more should more people want to reach out and find a spot. And, yeah, I think, is there any questions around enrollment? I'm happy to answer those. But yeah, our numbers are up, and we have a few more spots to fill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mauer. So are there any questions around enrollment or early childhood enrollment numbers?
I can just add a little context for the special aid. Usually those numbers grow throughout the year as we identify students with special education needs, birth to two and three to five. So we would expect, those are actually pretty solid numbers for both of those programs. We'll expect to see those. As the year goes on, we identify more students with needs. At, you know, the little ones, we'll 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 see those numbers go up. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Salison?
Yeah, I just had a comment about kind of this entire presentation. I think it really demonstrates how many moving parts there are in a school district as we look at how many things need to happen to ensure that our kids are educated. And I always say that I learn something at every school board meeting I go to because I could see where my life and family intersected here, like we had a kid in summer U for the first time, which was so great. He loved it. And we have a kid in middle school sports for the first time, but we don't need any Spanish language. We don't have kids in pre-K. And so it's a really great reminder for me about how many things are happening that I never see on a firsthand basis, that you all work so hard to do. So I'm grateful for all of this work and just I'm proud of all the programs that the district puts together that we don't all get to see all the time. And it's just a really good reminder. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salison. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move to our next agenda item, which is B two, which is construction update, phase one and two of the projects. Paul, is this you?
Yeah, thank you, I'll take that. Yeah, I mentioned facilities earlier and that we'd be revisiting that as the meeting went on. And so students came back with a lot of excitement this year with new facilities at new spaces at many of our facilities. Tonight, we asked Paul Epikowski and Sal Bagley from World Architects and Engineers to join us and give an update where we're at in the construction process. We also have A.J. Lilisby from Carl Sanderson to talk about the construction process. Also point out that we have phase two projects that we've been in the design phase, you'll learn about those. I'll get you a lot of information on those right now and those bid, those projects are out for bid and their bid closing dates are listed in the board memo. So that's happening and I'll turn it over to Sal and Paul.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Chair Millen and members of the board. We're pleased to be here tonight to share where the projects are at. So I'll just kick it off by saying what our agenda is tonight. So we were to give you a design update on the phase two elementary schools. So that includes Birch Lake, Lake Ayers and Otter Lake. We're gonna talk a little bit, or I'll actually hand it over to A.J. to talk about projects that are currently under construction. And then we're gonna spend a little time reviewing projects that got finished this year. So a little bit of celebration and then turn it over for questions and discussion.
Thank you, yes, thank you again for having us. So we'll start to...
Oh, we'll do construction when I think it's the third thing. Yeah. So just a brief reminder of the referendum project scope, there's a map on the left of this, I won't read it to everybody of what the scope was at every building, but high level, the themes were district-wide additions and renovations to accommodate projected enrollment role, safety and security improvements and deferred maintenance projects, as well as classroom and building upgrades to create flexible learning areas. So those key themes really encompassed all of the referendum work. When it comes to the status of each of the referendum projects, I'll show you some stats, I think, on the next slide, but the projects that are complete are the security renovation at the ALC, that actually was the first project out of the gate, finished last summer, two summers ago. And then what we refer to as the phase one elementary school projects are Lincoln, Matoska, Badness Heights and Willow Lane. So they were the first four elementary schools for their referendum work to be completed. We'll show you some after pictures of those today. Was already referenced that the new transportation maintenance facility was completed and turned over in July of this year. And then last but not least, that South Campus Phase One addition, which was that gym addition with the restrooms for the stadium. Projects that are in construction, we'll get to that a little later in the presentation, include the new elementary school, obviously the Unified White Bear Lake Area High School, South Campus Phase Two addition, which is classrooms and a new main office addition for security. And then the Phase One of the new classroom flexible furniture initiative, which Steve Bassler talked about earlier today. But we're gonna do a design update in a few minutes here about what's in design right now or out for bid, actually, I think for all of them. So Birch Lake, Lake Ayers and Otter Lake have been in the design phase for several months and we're about to take bids back from contractors. And what that leaves remaining, not yet started, would be Phase Two of the new classroom furniture. So the furniture is going in waves as the referendum projects are completed. The ALC has some scope left in a Phase Two. We'll be starting the Omeka Elementary School addition later yet, this fall, we're working with Principal Masser on that. The work at Central Middle School and then kind of last but not least, the work to happen at Sunrise Park, which is the future District Services Center, Transition Education Center and Early Childhood. Just to give some context for where we're at in completion of referendum projects, you can see all the buildings listed on the right-hand side here. These are actual figures, at least at the time of publishing, of how much those projects are through their billing of each one of their projects. And so you can see obviously the projects that we referenced that are completed, getting to their, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-five percent, just waiting for some completion materials from contractors. But when you look at the referendum in total, we're about fifteen point three percent complete as of this year. So big accomplishment, lot of work got done, certainly lots of work left to do. We'll go through the the design of those Phase Two elementary schools in just a second here. I just wanted to remind everyone the process that we've been using. So every single project has had what we call a core planning group, and that involves a select group of stakeholders for that building, usually administrators, teachers, sometimes even student involvement, that really helps us set the mission and vision for the project. And that usually happens over the course of maybe four to eight meetings, depending on the project size. They've gotten the opportunity to go on tours, both physical and digital. We spent a lot of time talking about development of criteria and guiding principles and really coming to agreement on what the project needs to accomplish. We go back and forth on building a building diagram with them and then really at the end of their processes, a kind of a floor plan that everybody can agree to. And then we roll into during the design development phase, we spend a lot of time with the users of given spaces in a process that we call the user groups. And so that involves every space that's affected, sitting down with the people that live and work in that space every day and making sure that the design will accommodate their needs. So storage needs, electrical needs, display needs, what should the finish on the floor be, how should the lights be switched? Certainly lots of integration with the tech department on that, but this builds a lot of ownership in the project and really leads to no surprises when staff finally get to move in after all of this time and effort. So I think that I'll turn it over to Paul to do a design update.
All right, we're gonna talk a little bit about the next three elementary schools. We'll start with Birch Lake. The scope for that project was a remodel of the media center, which are being rebranded as the Learning Commons in each school. Some creation of some new small spaces, small group spaces to create equity process district. That was another initiative of the referendum. And then the furniture that Sal talked about. And we are on schedule for these projects. We are, as Sal pointed out, right in the bidding phase now. This project is scheduled to open for the fall of twenty-two. So with the successful bidding, then I'll begin ordering materials this winter. With each of the buildings, we look at kind of a design concept. In these smaller projects, the concept often is, how do we draw from the culture of the building and some of the motifs and design of the building? So we were very attracted to the mural that's in the cafeteria at Birch. And also its its play on circles, which obviously is part of the plan of the building. That design on the right is one of our, one of our architects came up with that, is sort of an inspiration to thinking about circles and how they can interrelate. Next is the floor plan. So basically, the areas of the plan that are colored are, with the exception of the yellow, I guess, are all getting renovation. So one of the things that was great that came out of the core group for this work was to think about extending the Learning Commons into the cafeteria. So those rooms have been back-to-back all these years, but there's a big blank wall between them and you can't get between them. And the cafeteria spent a lot of time during the day being underutilized. So we're actually not doing very much renovation in there, we're simply cutting a big opening between the two so that when the cafeteria is not being used, you can flex out into that space and use that extra square footage. The other thing that I'm really excited about is that what that does is it opens the doors on the other side of the circle, really to go to the Learning Commons. And so really, I think we're gonna be able to create a little bit of that concept of that there's a commons going through the whole building, which I think will help with orientation in that building, because we all love that the circle buildings can be a little bit hard to to navigate and get your bearings in. So that was a wonderful outcome. It wasn't really explicitly part of the project in the referendum, but with the work of the core group and their good thinking, we were able to come up with that opportunity. Then the other big piece of the project is the one classroom addition, which is shown over on the right in green. This is just a zoom in of the media center area, Learning Commons area. So you can see we are largely staying within the same footprint of that. Some of the things that are nice that we're doing, we're gonna open up the hallway out to the the edge of the Learning Commons a little bit so that, again, it helps flow a little bit and creates a little bit more of a landmark as you go around the circle. Predominantly on then on that side will be the book stacks. And then the heart of that space will get a remodel, so the small group rooms and conference rooms and work rooms are all being redone to better fit their function. And then on the left, you can see there's kind of that that lighter black line there, that will actually be some glass and some operable doors that allow that to open up in the cafeteria. Then on the next side, you can see a little zoom in of the floor plan for the one classroom addition. As we have done on some other projects where other parts of the district, we're trying to maximize sort of the impact of each one of these things within the building. In this case, it's backed up to two classrooms. And those classrooms will have openings created in their existing windows out to a common flex space. So you're only building one classroom, but we're taking advantage of the hallway to be a flex learning space and then connecting those two classrooms again to maximize the impact of that. Then here is a rendering of the outside of the building. We're working to blend the materials of the recent addition along with the style and materials of the old building to bring those two together. This is an image inside the main hallway, looking into the Learning Commons. And so you can see how those openings will help kind of put that area on display and open it up to the students in the school. Then this is, we've just stepped inside of the Learning Commons, so you can see we're carrying that circle idea around the building and helping that to ground and make a sense of space and place within each of these areas. And then moving a little bit farther back, on the right, you can see that that orange soffit of the glass, so that goes out into the cafeteria and then getting a refreshed image and reconfiguration of space for the Learning Commons. And then finally, looking, not quite finally, finally in this area of the building, this is what it will look like from the cafeteria side. So we're largely saving the mural that's on the wall, we obviously have to cut into it, so we'll cut and patch that together, but gives you a great idea of how those spaces can help blend together. And then in the classroom addition, this is the flex learning space. This core group also was interested in creating some more flexibility for the classroom itself. So that wall on the left that you see is glass as an operable wall. So that room actually can become a three-sided classroom, open and up to the flex space, which really helps create kind of the idea of a mini learn studio in that part of the building with those other two classrooms. And then Lake Ayers, similar scope, the media center renovation into a Learning Commons, some accessory spaces, the freezer and orchestra space, so those were deficiencies that were identified as part of the referendum. And then the furniture, as we have talked about in the other ones, this one is also scheduled to open in the fall of twenty-two. In this case, we're really drawing along some of the interior design and space configuration elements of the project. As you know, this is a similar project to some of the other ones in the district, but we let each core group kind of figure out how to solve the problem in their own way. So next is the plan. So the biggest part of the project is in the Learning Commons. You'll see in the in the blow up that it's a very similar addition to some of the other projects, but how we're connecting to the building is a little bit different. And then on the left, you can see that we're solving those infrastructure and small group spaces on over in existing square footage. The next is a blow up of the Learning Commons. So in this case, we're actually have quite a bit more openness between the Learning Commons and the hallway. We have a rendering of that that shows it for you to appreciate. On the right side, that area that's shown in gray, I guess it's kind of blue on that screen, is the orchestra space. And that is being configured as a multipurpose space, again with an operable wall that goes under the Learning Commons to maximize that. And then there's some conference rooms and the stack areas within there. This is a rendering of the backside of the building showing the additions. So we're working on blending the recent additions with the old parts of the building to try to come up with a good connection and image for that. Then this shows that dramatic opening that this one's gonna have out to the hallway. So about half of that opening is glassed in and half of it is just open to create a really open feeling and flow between that and the rest of the school. Stepping into the Learning Commons, we're looking out through the what is the existing wall where those columns are out to the new windows hanging out there. And again, a lot of idea of making flexibility within that space with furniture. And finally, Otter Lake gets the media center renovation. This is one of the larger elementary projects, getting a five classroom capacity addition and then the furniture that we've talked about in the other ones. This one will take a little bit longer to complete because of the scope, so it's projected to be finished in the winter of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year sometime. This one, we built a little bit on the existing theme of lakes and water and streams that the school had identified over the years. And you've all seen some things in there with tree and some of the signage that they have, so we're building on that theme. In the floor plan, kind of the concept is that each one of the pods becomes kind of a tributary and the Learning Commons in the center becomes the lake or the settling area for all of those. There's some exciting things that are really gonna transform your feeling of this building. In the Learning Commons area, we're actually gonna, conceptually anyway, extend the Learning Commons out to the outside walls and we're taking out much of the the ring hallway that goes around that. So instead of kind of another almost circle building, you're gonna have a space that you're really flow through like a commons in the center of the building. And then for the addition, we are attaching it onto the side of that pod on the northeast there. And you can see that we are creating a flexible area in the middle again to give flexible learning space. These classrooms have all of the, or many of the good ideas that we've had in other buildings with teachers and staff, including openings between the classrooms that a lot of visibility to help foster collaboration, as well as some connections into the old pod there too. So some of the classrooms get access from that point. And then some minor improvements to the cafeteria and kitchen. Here's a plan of the Learning Commons area. It's a little hard to see, but in the renderings, you'll see it better. We're deconstructing quite a bit of the perimeter wall there. We're actually putting a multipurpose room up on that north side, so that'll be kind of attached to the outside wall and the circulation area will be rerouted around that to help break that up and make it all flow together better. And then this is a view of the classroom area, so there's those five classrooms. They are grouped together in smaller groups. We work very closely with the core group to talk about the best way to make that the most flexible. So there's really a grouping of two or three classrooms that can be done with different openings within there. We are also incorporating the idea of the mudroom that the new elementary school uses, so that gets that. Bathroom's in there. And then another fun idea that came up from the working with the core group was to create a back vestibule that goes out to the play area and really is close to the fields that get used a lot there. And that actually will have a bathroom in it that is set up so that you can open up just that vestibule in the bathroom for the public. The outside of the building, we're really working to blend in with the existing building, so you can see it has a lot of the same materials and design as that. As we move inside then, this is a view of the new opened up Learning Commons. So we're actually standing in what right now would be a hallway at the corner of one of those. And you can see that we've left kind of the center portion of the wall, which you can see on the right center. But then to the, when you look to the left, you can see right through to the tree in the center of the Learning Commons there to really flow. And each one of those openings aligns with the pod opening. So again, a nice flow back and forth from the classroom areas. This is another view inside the space, so we're preserving the tree. The ceilings will be there, the soffit that's around there, but then everything else around that is really being transformed. One more view of that central area. And then this is a view of the new classroom pod in that flexible learning area. So on the right, you can see the fronts of the classroom, there's again that visibility and doors that open there. On the left side, then there's some small group spaces and niches built into the hallway there. Sure, there's a question?
Just real quick, Otter's been my liaison school for a long time and they've spent a great deal of effort and done a lot of cool things with their outdoor classroom. So how did this new plan tie in with the outdoor classroom?
Is that on the north side of the building? I think it is, yeah. We talked about that in the design process. That actually was one of the first places for our classroom additions, we were thinking may link both between these two rooms. And they, we've, in work with them, we talked about moving that and opted to go to this spot, so we would avoid that. There are connections between what we're doing and that. We are actually creating some outdoor spaces outside each classroom, so there's gonna be a sitting area that is adjacent to or a part of the playground area. So in essence, we're making, I think it's three new smaller outdoor classroom spaces on the playground side of things too.
So they still have their grasslands and all the things they've been working on?
Yes.
I just wondered if the outdoor exits made it easier to get to?
Sure. Yep, yep, we have that new vestibule to figure out and then you can get out the end of the addition as well to go around that way. So for sure, yes.
Cool.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. That's all right. For the Otter Lake, has that started already then? Construction's working?
We're in the bidding phase right now.
Okay. So then, well, my question was, because I was a little confused, will that open in the winter of twenty-two, twenty-three?
The plan is to have it open and AJ helped me on that.
Yeah, so this is 2223.
Okay. Oh, so we have it wrong.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to call you on it.
No, no, that's okay. I'd rather have it be correct. Thank you for correcting me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll hand it over to AJ.
All right.
Yeah, a little construction update.
Yes. So first up, we have the new elementary school. So it's a new 101,000 square foot building along with on and off site improvements at about $43 million in project cost. So construction started this spring. Some of the milestones for work completed that we have our second floor concrete topping in areas D and E. Some of the work in progress that we have going on outside right now are electrical underground in area A. So electrical underground in area A, turf and native preparation and seating on the north end of the property. Now we've got metal roofing trusses and decking being installed in area A as well. We have a lot of the exterior enclosure with the wall framing, brick veneer, weatherproofing, spray foaming, as well as roof block roof blocking for the Hunter metal panel installs. Some of the work upcoming out there, we've got roofing in area D, which I think on the next picture, you might be able to see that big metal deck there that's going to be getting covered with the insulation and membrane and then as well as interior metal stud framing. So I think we can play that video now.
And are we supposed to have them play or do we play it from here? We do, okay.
Yep, so we're gonna play a brief video here recently taken at the new elementary school to show construction status.
Did it really sound that way?
Yep.
I'll go back and then you can.
Stir it over?
Try it. It should be on. It isn't speaking, it's just music behind it.
Coleman, the superintendent on site for Krels Anderson, talk about the organization of
Oh, God. It's my turn.
the contractors who are doing the work and how well those teams of contractors are all working together to make sure that they stay ahead of each other or behind each other, depending on where they need to be working. So they really have an organized process getting around that building, doing the what it's exterior work that needs to one before the other. They're working really well together and it's just an excellent team out there working on this. So thanks to Krels Anderson for that.
Ms. Floyd?
What's going to happen with the traffic along 61 right there? Because you're going to obviously have times of the day where you're going to have a lot of people coming in and out, and there's no lights or anything right there.
Yeah, there will be. That's part of the project is there'll be a controlled intersection at 152nd Street and Highway 61. And that will happen next summer. We're working with Washington County, City of Hugo, Mindat. Do we have any other partners on that, Paul?
Uh, Washington, yeah.
Washington, yeah.
And the trail.
Yeah, and the hardwood trail. So there's a lot of partners on that.
You've got the trail going right across there.
It's a very complicated process to get a controlled intersection on a state highway. Full figure.
Well, it's actually kind of nice to have it there because there's several accidents that happen all the time at 150. There's even a passing lane, several accidents where people just forget that you can go around and slam the light in people. So it's kind of nice to have that slowdown through there.
Yeah, I think everyone's glad to have a reason to slow traffic down as it comes from the north toward downtown Hugo. Other questions, comments? Sure. So the new elementary school, as you know, we named the principal Dan Schmidt, who's with us tonight. Principal Schmidt's here. Daniel, I talked about the naming, school naming process here. Have this seat.
Does the mic contact you? Yeah. Thank you, Board Chair Mullin and School Board members. We're starting the process of naming the new school. It's very exciting times. We have a blank slate, so we're starting from scratch. It's pretty cool. So a couple pieces of information that you may not be aware of. Dan Schmidt, principal at Lincoln Elementary School, and I have the honor of opening up the new school in the fall of 2022. Still on schedule, it's pretty exciting. We've been putting together a committee, and we have a committee of about four staff members, six parents, two community members, and one to two students that are involved in the community. So it's a nice sized group. Obviously, they can't all be there at every single meeting, but we really appreciate their enthusiasm and we keep them updated on information as it's coming about. What we did at the first meeting that happened on September 16th is obviously went through the introductions, and then we just kind of talked about the school board policy on naming, so that there is a baseline there. And we went through the district mission statement. And then it was really nice, the principals at Onika and Hugo, they talked about their building mission statement too. Then we went through the review of the design and the renderings of the new school and kind of explained how that all came about. And then we had a guest speaker that was arranged to attend, and it was Cynthia Shunover. She's from the Hugo Historical Commission. And she provided us with the history of Hugo, which was more of a walk through time. And it was kind of exciting because she brought in the perspective of the indigenous people at that time and era. And then she moved it into the European connections that were in place. And so it was really fun to really get a deeper analysis of what was going on in the community back then. Now we're at this, we're at the next step now, we're gathering names and trying to get some ideas from what the community hopes that may be through their own brainstorming that we could consider for names. That's taking place up through October 13th. Now for the community at large, if you haven't submitted a name and you have an idea, I went through the process myself without submitting a name. And it was district webpage, and then you go to building our future. You scroll all the way down to the new elementary school naming submit all, and then you have a form link that's included inside. So if you have an idea, please submit your idea. Right now, we're at about over 40 names that have been submitted so far. And and most of them aren't duplications. So it's I like the thinking that's going on out there. And what's really nice about the survey that was being created is that they asked the community members to write a rationale or why they put the their suggestion on the form. So that's kind of nice. So we're going to be having that conclude on October 13th. We're going to meet again October 14th, and then we'll give you an update again, I believe, around October 25th. And then eventually we'll come with a recommendation, a final recommendation to the board for your consideration. Are there any questions?
Questions for us, right? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
And I just note the elementary principals in Hugo and Onika have distributed that link to their parents, their families to submit names. We posted it on the district Facebook page, and the city of Hugo has reposted it from their page too. So hopefully people are seeing that opportunity to forward a name and the committee will look forward to that October 14th, getting back at it.
All right. So up next, we have the North Campus High School. So we have very large additions out there. We get 375,000 square feet of new addition and almost whole building renovations throughout, totaling about 240 million in project costs. Construction started this summer on the site development in the three story classroom addition with the new field house. We've actually started in the excavation portion of that now. Some of the major milestones that we've got for work complete out there is deep dewatering and deep sanitary along the north and west sides of the project. We've started excavations for puddings and foundations in area L and moving into K. So that's moving north around the circle there. So we're going on forming and reinforcing and pouring those puddings and foundations in area L. We're also doing a lot of existing tunnel works. We've got a lot of new electrical conduit reroutes and mechanical items that need to be cleared out for replacement. For the site work, we've got aggregate base going on for the new stadium, which you can kind of see in the next, no, was that picture, sorry. Right there, that's the sand sub base, but we've got aggregate going in on top of that now along with trench drains and athletic equipment for that new stadium. Some of the work upcoming, so we're moving into area N, M, and L for structural steel, hopefully starting the second week of October. We're currently excavating for the puddings and foundations at that new field house. We've got a giant hole opened up out there again. Demolition prep for the existing boiler room and field house building connection as well. So we can play that video. Up here, you could actually see the deep sanitary there. So that's 27 feet down, the lowest point of our sanitary. Very deep excavator. I tried narrating this before with the camera, but you still have some complaints. So left right there is the building pad for where the new field house is going to be, which is currently excavated. Temples live there on the north side. It's possible temp lining for the piece by shot. So we've got additions renovations to create the grade.
Before you do it, Chair Mullin, do you want to ask questions?
Questions regarding the North Campus are with the new high school.
No questions, just amazing. We're so proud of it. Excited for all of the work that's being done and to have you here to show not only us, but any community members who, you know, all this work that's being done. It's quite amazing. I could just say when it was back to school for my daughter, who's in middle school all night, there were a lot of parents trying to croull their kids to quit staring at the movers and the stuff that was going on outside the window. But also good to let them see that work being done because who knows if that's a career they want to go into someday. Great to see it. Thank you.
Ms. Floyd?
So I know we had to do a lot of work with the DNR because of that's because of that being a wetland area. And I've heard from from community members that if you hear the pumping, what exactly is happening with the wetland area? What?
So the pumping that they were hearing was on the the west side of that dewatering system. So in order to excavate down that 27 feet, that wetland in the water table was up so high, and we were we had to excavate about 13 feet below the water table. So what those two pumps were was actually drawing all that water down. And so then that was running back through filtered and we were putting back into the storm system. So that's only a temporary measure until we can get the installation complete. And now those pumps are actually gone now that the deep excavation is done. And then for the future, the wetland is obviously becoming fields up there on that north side. So they've got new ponds and irrigate and other CMPs that are going in to kind of offset that.
Asking, we have to offset the size of that? We couldn't just go into the wetland? We had to add a wetland or it had to be an apples to apples?
Yeah, purchase wetland credits elsewhere within watershed, which is within the watershed district, so there's not a net loss of water of wetland in the watershed. And that the question did come up, Ms. Floyd, about the pumps. And, you know, we had one neighbor who was concerned about the noise. And I talked to our team at Krels Anderson, and they were great. They were able to find some ways, strategies to make that not so impactful on the property.
I feel like we should just clear up some terminology. The pumping really wasn't about wetlands. It was about keeping the trench from flooding. We are doing the wetland mitigation, but it's it's kind of actually a small part of things. It wasn't very much space that we we did our best to miss them in the design.
I know we kind of had to do the same thing in Hugo too, because everything in Hugo is a wetland, it seems. So I know we had to be the same kind of work with the DNR to offset some of that, correct?
Yeah, we didn't have to buy any wetland credits there. We just had to make sure we measured well and that we retained water off the site and had good plans for that. So there was a lot of work with wetland there as well, just to make sure that we weren't impeding on the wetland areas.
At the new elementary, we're not covering any wetland. There's stormwater control, but all the existing wetland, we stayed away from. Officially designated wetland.
Nice.
Back to the master?
Does North Campus still have some of its own private wetland? Or is it all gone?
Yes, again, we impacted a very small area of wetland. There was actually some, there's some kind of in the middle of the campus that most likely were ditches that were created over time that became wetlands. We're mitigating those, and then there's a small area of liricas that were kind of clipping.
At the end of the playing fields, I remember that's where the biology classes all listed a very local field trip through there.
And the northwest corner of the site is still all going to stay natural.
Yeah, and that's what she's referring to. And so what AJ just explained about the dewatering, correct me if I'm wrong, is is the need to get rid of that water for the time being so they could take care of the construction, and then that'll be returned as a wetland area in that northwest corner.
Yeah, it only takes about three days for that water table to come back up for that whole area.
One more thing that I think is interesting in talking about wetlands and conserving and making sure we're doing things right. When we had the groundbreaking ceremony for the new high school, there was talk about the way that the dirt is being moved, which I found interesting. If someone could maybe explain, because it's being utilized in the best way it can, correct? Like the soil is being separated from the dirt and?
Yep, we have a lot of the topsoil stockpiled out there. So some of that will be getting reused. And then as a as a whole around the site, it almost comes to a balance. So everywhere we've had to do cuts and fills throughout the project site, we're able to reuse the native soils rather than having to export or import new soils.
And that was made possible through some pretty high tech process of drilling and understanding exactly what dirt was there at what depth. And then and then the contractor being able to dig to just the right depths to get just one clear type of soil out, so they weren't contaminating those different piles. And so you see lots of piles of dirt out there, but they're it's a planned chaos. There's.
No, I love it. As a novice gardener, I would like one of those machines to dig into my soil action.
It's pretty amazing.
It is.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Proceed, please.
All right. So we're on South Campus Phase Two. So we have additions renovations to create a grade six through eight middle school that includes classroom and main entry additions. Renovation of the media center along with new furniture for it and the classrooms, which is a future phase. So some of the work completed out there right now is site removals and excavations for the new utilities along with the site stormwater management measures. Some of the work in progress is excavations along with forming and steel reinforcement for the concrete puddings and foundations, along with additional site utilities. Some of the work upcoming, the big stuff that we got going is backfill for the puddings and foundations and the building pad preparation for the precast panels coming this winter.
We don't have a video flyover for the new work in Phase Two, but these are some
And that was made possible through some pretty high-tech process of drilling and understanding exactly what dirt was there at what depth. And then, and then the contractor being able to dig to just the right depths to get just one clear type of soil out. So they weren't contaminating those different piles. And so you see lots of piles of dirt out there, but it's a planned chaos. There's.
No, I love it. As a novice gardener, I would like one of those machines to dig into my soil action.
It's pretty amazing.
It is.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Proceed, please.
So we're on South Campus Phase Two. So we have additions renovations to create a grade six through eight middle school that includes classroom and main entry additions. Renovation of the media center along with new furniture for it and the classrooms, which is a future phase. And so some of the work completed out there right now is site removals and excavations for the new utilities along with the site stormwater management measures. Some of the work in progress is excavations along with forming and steel reinforcement for the concrete puddings and foundations along with additional site utilities. Some of the work upcoming, the big stuff that we got going is backfill for the puddings and foundations and the building pad preparation for the pre-cast panels coming this winter.
We don't have a video flyover for the new work in Phase Two, but these are some completed photos of the Phase One addition. If you haven't had a chance to get over there, so this is the gym and restroom addition. So you can see from a view from inside the gym, a view from, a couple of views actually of the hallway. Both of the views on the right-hand side are of the hallway and looking back towards the doors and then looking towards the restrooms. And then bottom left photo would be a view of the outside, kind of the view you see from the stadium or from the road. Any questions on South Campus before we?
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, so I'll quickly hit these. So these are completed projects. So obviously, we're here to celebrate. We're working closely with Kross Anderson to get professional photography arranged, but we do have photos today. So I'll start with, obviously, the South Campus Gym Edition. We've talked about that a little bit. The scope was a two-station gym with storage and restrooms. The bid opening was almost a year ago on October 6th. They started construction right away and it was complete this fall. Take on a couple of those photos.
You've got Tim in the photo.
Was that you in the photo there, Tim?
Yeah.
Nice. When it comes to the new transportation and maintenance facility, so that was a building to support the operations, including office space, maintenance space, and bus parking. So design really finished up late last summer, so August 2020. We did the bid opening September 17th, so just over a year ago. And that took a little under a year to build, so it opened or got turned over to the district in July of this year. So just a couple of photos of that. You can see in the upper left-hand photo, a high kind of bird's eye photo of the bus parking area and the screening and gates that go in and out of that to protect those assets. Upper right-hand photo is a view of the exterior of the maintenance bay. So that's the larger part of the facility is to have four different stations to do maintenance and service on buses and vans. The bottom right-hand photo is a view that you would see from the road. The smaller volume in the front is actually the office to support all of those functions. It's got a driver room, some restrooms, dispatch, things like that. And then last but not least, the bottom left photo is a view from inside that maintenance bay. So that's really where those buses and vans can be serviced. There's a couple lifts, you know, compressed fluids on hand, lots of storage, you know, tools, tires, et cetera. Really to support all of that in a great way, get it off of the North Campus site. Just a couple other photos. Upper left-hand photo, you can see some buses coming in and out of that area, getting in a couple of those bays. A view bottom left would be the view as bus drivers park and leave their bus overnight. And then again, another view of the maintenance bay. The design does allow for buses to be driven in one side and driven out. So it's drive-through if you choose to operate it that way. Lincoln Elementary School, so the addition at Lincoln was again similar to Otter, one of the larger in the referendum, just because of the gymnasium that was added at Lincoln. So in addition to that gymnasium, there are a couple of support spaces, a conference room, cooler, addressing extended day storage and office, rearrangement of parking for the addition and then renovation of the learning commons. And then the former small gym was actually renovated to serve a new purpose as a couple of music spaces. So Phase One of their furniture is also complete, so they got new furniture for all their referendum touch spaces is what I would call them. And then new classroom furniture is coming yet late this year. And the bid opening for that was October 13th of last year. So again, a little under a year of construction over at Lincoln. Here's just a couple of photos. So you can see a photo from inside. The new gym is the larger photo on the left-hand side there. And then a view of the outside of that gym addition is in the upper right-hand corner. And then the bottom right-hand corner is the new maker space or flexible lab that's actually right off of the cafeteria. At Matoska, the project scope there was a renovation of that learning commons. I see a common theme. The creation of some of those support spaces, freezer, space for EL, extended day, and as well as a couple of classrooms to better support their enrollment and what they need for specialists. They also got furniture for all of their referendum touch spaces yet this summer. And then their Phase Two, all of their classrooms will get new furniture next summer. So they're part of the kind of the referendum projects and furniture kind of flip. Very similar timeline to the last two projects. Here's a couple of photos. So the left-hand photo is from inside the renovated learning commons. Kind of right after the new furniture had been installed and the media team was replacing the books on the shelves. Upper right-hand photo was from the new classroom addition, so the flexible learning space right outside those two new classrooms. And then the bottom right-hand photo is from inside one of those classrooms as teachers were moving in. So it was an exciting couple of days.
Those classrooms at Matoska double as a storm shelter too, so they're really, as does the gym at Lincoln. Both built to storm shelter grade, very heavy-duty construction.
That's true, and that's a good point, Tim. The addition at Otter Lake that you saw the design of earlier, the classroom addition portion will be designed to storm shelter as well. At Badness Heights, the learning commons renovation as well as some renovation to create appropriate space for extended day and orchestra, as well as the creation of a freezer that the building didn't have was the main scope. Very similar in regards to overall timeline, got furniture for referendum touch spaces this year. Classroom furniture will be next year. Here's a couple of photos of that. So the left-hand photo is a view of the renovated learning commons from the hallway. So again, that physical connection and transparency to the hallway. We've got in the upper right-hand, actually both of the photos on the right-hand side are from inside of that learning commons. Really highlighting, featuring the flexible furniture, which I would say is getting rave reviews so far from what we've heard at all the sites. So that's a great outcome to have. And then last but not least would be Willow Lane, so the media center renovation or learning commons, I should say. Again, orchestra and freezer space, other common themes that the buildings were lacking. And they got furniture for their referendum touch spaces yet this summer. So you can see here on the left-hand side is a view from inside the flexible lab that will also be used for orchestra at the times of the day that that is needed. And the flexible space that's inside that, you can see a feature there in the ceiling. They've got those drop-down cord reels so that they can do activities at the tables without having power on the floor. Upper right-hand photo is what you see of the learning commons from the main hallway now. So it's very prominently featured on display physically and visually connected. And then last but not least, the bottom right-hand photo is a view of the exterior of the addition there. So this is a project that's very similar to the Lake Ayers project you saw earlier, just because they're the same floor plan of building, so just done a little bit different.
I'll point, this is a good slide to point out a few things that were important to the committee as we talked about. One of those big buckets that are important in all of our sites. And one is that media center, which we rebranded as a learning commons to be the center of learning in a school. And so by opening it up, it's no longer just a room behind, you know, where you shut a door and it's a quiet space. It becomes the center of learning and student life in a school. And you'll see that as you enter our elementary schools that have completed their projects, that the learning commons is a much more highlighted space in the building. And then the multi-use classroom, we've talked about a space to get messy with water access, a space where a maker space can be functional. And so each of our classrooms or schools will have something that looks a lot like this. This is pretty typical of what they'll look like, where that kind of messy learning can happen.
So when we talk about next steps, my eyes aren't good enough to look that direction. I gotta go look this. Oh, thank you. So obviously, Burt's Lake, Otter Lake, and Lake Ayers, we just talked about that they have new classroom furniture. The Phase One elementary projects are substantially completed. Transportation facility is substantially complete. And the Phase Two elementary projects is going to procure materials and start construction next spring. We'll be receiving the bids in about the next month or so. And then South Campus will actually have all of its referendum scope besides its furniture complete next fall. So and then obviously, the Unified High School, the stadium will be complete for fall of 2022. And Phase One construction at the high school, which comprises the main classroom towers and the field house, that's where you saw the video, had the puddings and foundations underway, will be completed in January of 2023, which will sneak up on us, I'm sure. And with that, we would thank you for all the time. I know it was a lot to go through.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Ms. Olson?
I just wanted to ground us in the fact that we haven't even had this referendum for two years. It hasn't even been two years since the community voted on this. And the scope of projects that are already completed is extraordinary. My, two of my kids go to Matoska and, well, they love it. The teachers, the kids, the mudroom concept is brilliant. Because anybody who's ever tried to help a first grader put their boots on, you know, will really appreciate that in the winter. The furniture is wonderful, but I'm just, I'm really impressed and proud that even with a pandemic, it hasn't even been two years. And there's so much good work done, so much needed work. Everybody that I've talked to who has any connection with Lincoln, like former students, current students, former teachers are like, the gym, finally the gym. So it's just, I'm really grateful. Thank you for all this work.
Thank you. It's been an honor. We've been having a lot of fun doing it, so.
And there's two people on our team that we should highlight that are here tonight is Dan Roser, Director of Facilities, and then Kevin Fernandez, who's our project manager. And they, the team at Wald and Kross Anderson know them well because they're intimately involved in every discussion every day to make sure that everything's come along just right. So just want to give a shout out to those two because they've been fantastic.
Yeah, thank you so much. That's wonderful. I'll have to get to Lincoln because I can say that, I won't say when I was there, but I was a student there. And it'll be nice to see a different cafeteria gym space in that building.
Well, I don't think you opened it, right? Pretty close, pretty close.
Other questions or comments? Thank you all very much for your work. We really appreciate the updates.
Yeah, thank you for the time.
Thank you, guys.
Well, then we'll move into our next agenda item, B3, which is the world's best workforce and achievement integration. Dr. Gillespie.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Starting new to complex, you often put me at the end of the meeting after you've had a really long agenda. We're going to be excited to talk about this. So I have two of my colleagues with me, Dr. Melinda Piero, who's our research evaluation and assessment coordinator, and Dr. Davis, who you met earlier and have met our Director of Equity and Engagement. And we're going to talk about world's best workforce and our achievement and integration. Every year we bring this to you. And I wanted to remind you that this is part of the way that we hold ourselves accountable as a district. It's one requirement that is important, but it's not the sole requirement. And so in the spring, I brought a comprehensive plan on the work that we want to do as we look toward what outcome measures that we talk about around student achievement. What ways are we going to define student achievement and student success within our system? And that work is still ongoing and will continue to bring updates and recommendations from our systems accountability and internal groups this year. So I think that's important to keep in the context as we talk about all of this. And then we will do our best to infuse actions that are occurring in our system to respond to areas that we know we need to improve on for every one of our students. And I think and know that we have dedicated people that are excited about the work that we're doing. How do we align the teaching and learning experiences to these amazing facilities that we just heard about? And so there's just a lot of work, but I'm being really intentional about making sure we're constantly bringing updates to the board. I know it feels like I've been here a really long time, but I actually just finished my first year in this position. Yes, I know. Wayne says I can't say first year anymore, but I'm holding on to two years. And so just know that that work is really important to me as we really celebrate the work that we have done in our district, but also how we get better for our community. We're going to start with world's best workforce and then we'll go to achievement and integration. Okay, yep, I will do this.
Okay, so just a reminder, the five goal areas under world's best workforce are all children are ready for school. All third graders can read at grade level. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career in college and all students graduate from high school. So the first goal area is all children are ready for school. And our goal for the end of the 2020, 2021 school year was that 75% of our four-year-old preschool students that are enrolled in a White Bear Lake area schools preschool program, that's an important distinction, will demonstrate kid heart readiness by being able to accurately verbally count to 20 and will be able to recognize at least 10 upper and lowercase letters, especially the ones in their own name. This goal was met. 75.1% of students were able to count verbally to 20 and 85.2% were able to name at least 10 upper and lowercase letters by the end of 2020.
Chair Mullen, do you want to, each area is a little bit unique. Do you want us to do the whole overall and take questions at the end?
I think that would be best as far as timing goes and then be able to answer questions at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so the second goal area is all third graders can read at grade level. This is a three-year goal that we set. The MCA reading assessment four in 2019 was 62.6%. And we set a three-year goal of reaching 68.1% by June of 2023. As you know, MCA threes were not given in the spring of 2020 because of the pandemic. They were given this spring in the spring of 2021. Our overall third grade proficiency rate was 54.6%. However, that was also accompanied by a 14.6% drop in participation. Typically in White Bear, we have about a 99% participation rate with our MCAs. And depending on the grade level, it was anywhere between 30% and 75% roughly this past spring.
So a few things to point out, 68.1% was our goal prior to the pandemic. And so that is why that continues to be our goal. Additionally, we have internal measures that we are looking at to really measure what our students are able to do in terms of literacy. And that's really a large focus area for us as a system when we look at early literacy, which we talked, Tim referenced in his early childhood presentation. We have Cynthia, who a couple meetings ago talked about what we're doing in elementary. And so it's a balancing, I don't know, Melinda can talk better perhaps about it. But when we brought this to systems accountability, we talked through this. And one of our community members reminded us that even though we've seen a drop in participation and we would expect to see that increase for this next year, there are families who may still choose to not have their students take the MCA. And so how do we balance that, knowing that this is an important measure for us as a district? To make sure, you know, in terms of accountability towards the Minnesota State standards, but also that we have really strong measurements on what students are able to do in terms of their skills and literacy so that we can concretely report to you how we're doing and see where we need to get better and show that we're improving. And if we're not, identify what else we need to do to get better in those areas.
And just a side note to that, even the state of Minnesota says that MCA should be one of the things that we look at in terms of measuring our literacy rate, but not the entire picture. So we do use a lot of other data points to inform us. The next goal area is all racial and academic achievement gaps between students are closed. Again, we set a three-year goal and it was a baseline goal. Or it's actually a goal where the numbers don't show up because you're looking at it each year by the percentage of highest enrollment. So by the goal reads, by the end of the 2022, 2023 school year, the percentage of students in each ethnic, racial group and socioeconomic group who are enrolled in potentially college credit-bearing courses will match the group with the highest percentage of enrollment. And so I'll explain that as I go through this. So our progress towards that goal for the school year of 2020, 2021, this is all students in grades nine through 12. We had 50.3% of our Asian students enrolled in at least one potentially college credit-bearing course. 28.4% of our black or African-American students, 30.9% of our Hispanic students, 36.36% of our multiracial students, 25% of our Native American students, and 44.6% of our white students. Our highest percentage of enrollment is our white students at 72%. So we would want all of these categories. We would want at least 44% of our Asian students, at least 44% of our black students if we were meeting that goal at the end of 2023. So that's what we're working towards.
Can you talk a little bit about the potentially aspect?
Oh, yep. So what we mean by potentially college credit-bearing courses is we know that AP courses can result in college credit, but a student needs to take the assessment and the college that they're going to needs to accept that credit. So we count AP courses as potentially college credit-bearing. We also have CIS classes and concurrent enrollment classes, FPSO classes. Those all earn credit simply by successfully completing the course. So that's why we are, we put the word potentially in there. We, our assumption is a student takes an AP class, takes the exam, and gets the credit when they move on to their post-secondary. And the next goal is all students are ready for career in college. And the next goal is all students are ready for career in college. Our goal is that the percentage of White Bear Lake Area High School students who by the end of their senior year have completed at least four courses or 12 credits that are potentially post-secondary credit bearing will increase from the results 31%, 25% to 40%, 25% by June of 2023. This was a baseline goal for us this year. So these numbers are a baseline, and then we're moving, we want to move forward. So the 2021 data, 31% or 222 of our 713 enrolled seniors completed at least four courses and 25% or 178 of the 713 seniors completed at least 12 credits. Now, there are varying credits with our CIS, PSCE classes. We, we, because, for example, we don't, that's very hard to delineate out which ones were one credit, which ones were five credits, which ones were three. We assigned three credits to any course that was taken. So that's, so keep that in mind when you're thinking about the data. We said each class is worth three credits. And so if you take four classes, you've earned 12 credits for the ease of collecting data.
If you remember, this is one of the measures that I hope to, that we have multiple measures for. We have historically talked about students earning 12 credits and had that percentage. So that's what we're continuing with now. And could that be, if we continue to identify that as a goal, there's a lot of research to support that that is one way to identify college and career readiness. But when we talk about having multiple measures, that would be what we would anticipate ending the school year with. So then next year, when we bring that, this, this might be the goal that we report for World's Best Workforce, but we would have more data to support based on whatever measures we determine on how many of our students graduated college and career ready.
All right, and then the last one.
Sorry.
I have a tickle in my throat, so I apologize. All students graduate from high school. Our three-year goal for this was that we would increase our four-year graduation rate from 91.2% for the class of 2019 to 96% by June of 2023, which is really the class of 2022 because the state reports graduation rates one year behind. The class of 2020, which is the earliest year or the soonest year that we have data for, was a 90.1% graduation rate in four years. And keep in mind that the four-year graduation rate is the on-time graduation rate and that students can count in that four-year up until the first day of the following school year. So if our school year started on September 7th, students who graduated up to September 6th would count in that four-year rate and would be considered on-time. When you look at our five, six, and seven-year graduation rate, the rates increase exponentially. We have a strong ALC program. We have a strong transitions program. And there are students that continue with us for various reasons. But if you look at those dates or that data, we're up in the 95, 96% range by year seven, so.
Well, the four-year graduation rate includes both the South Campus, our high school graduation rate and the ALC rate. And we're proud of that. We're proud of the options that we have here. Not all districts report those the same. And so I think it's important when we get compared across multiple different districts that if you were to look at our South Campus graduation rate, it is higher than that 90%. And so we want to make sure that we identify that we're proud of where our students are. And we're thinking of multiple ways to make sure all students graduate on time, if that's appropriate. And that's why it's not 100% because for some students, graduating on time is not part of the plan for their IEP goals or whatever their transition team would think for and decide would be the best way for our students to make sure that their college or their career ready and goal ready when they graduate. But I think that's important to hold on to. And so when we talk about what we're doing to increase our graduation rate, ninth grade is really a huge pivotal year. Everything we do in our system will help prepare students to be better, have higher skills, and be more prepared with social, emotional learning and everything to graduate on time. But ninth grade, there's a ton of research that when students do well in ninth grade, they graduate on time. And when they don't do well, it significantly drops their chances of graduating on time. And so the implementation of the BAR program at ninth grade last year and continuing to strengthen this year was one of the major strategies that we did. And I'm excited to watch as that, that last year's ninth grade class progresses through to see the impact that'll have because the trends and data that support the BAR program show that it has a drastic impact on the graduation rate in a really fast time. And we saw an impact even in passing rates for our ninth grade class during the pandemic. And then, and you know, all those different things we were navigating last year that we didn't get to implement BAR exactly the way we will this year. And so we have a lot of other things that we're doing, but that is a huge thing that we're doing to support our ninth graders.
Melinda, do you know the South Campus graduation rate off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but I can get that.
I believe it's 96 or 97%. I believe it's 97.
It's up there, yep.
So that gives some context too, to the figures as well.
Yep, I can get that, but I don't have that. All right, so I'm moving into our 2021 to 2023 goals. Many of these are going to look very similar to the goals that we just talked about because like we said, we planned three-year goals. The one goal that is shifting is that all children are ready for school. We have implemented our FastBridge screening, universal screening that you may have heard about in other conversations across the district down to kindergarten, starting with the fall. And so those are tests that are designed, assessments that are designed for the developmental age of kindergarten and first grade. And they're really, from the perspective of the kindergartner or first grader who's taking the assessment, they don't feel like assessments. They're really conversations between the teacher and the student, much like any other classroom assessment that they're doing. The difference is the teacher records that information and we're able to kind of look at it holistically. So some of the same concepts that you saw in the previous goal are in this goal. In other words, ladder naming is one of the subtests in that composite. And there is some counting in the math version. And so we're getting a more holistic picture beyond just letter names and math counting for our students by having everyone take the entire composite test. And so our goal is a baseline goal. 75% of all of our White Bear Lake Area kindergarten students who are enrolled in a White Bear Lake Area Schools preschool program will demonstrate readiness for school by earning a FastBridge Early Reading Composite score of 25 or higher by fall of 2023. And then our third grade goal is staying the same. As we mentioned before, it's based around the MCA Reading Assessment. And we want to increase from 62.6% to 68% by June of 2023. Our racial and economic achievement gaps between students goal is also the same. We're looking at increasing the participation of all student groups in courses that can potentially earn them college credit as they move on. Our, all students are ready for career in college and school is staying the same for now also as we work through the cheering that we want to do in the multiple goals. But like I said, we had baseline data from 2020, 2021, and we're working on increasing the completion rate of our students in these courses. And our high school goal is staying the same. Increase from 91.2% from our class of 2019 to 96% by our class of 2020.
Questions? Dr. Arkan?
I just have a quick question or maybe a curiosity on the, by the end of the 22, 23 school year, percentage of students in ethnic, racial groups and socioeconomic groups who are enrolled in college credit courses. Do we know there's an opportunity gap in the success rate then? Because I don't want to be setting kids up for failure for not providing the supports for them. But do we know, is there an opportunity gap between the different groups when they take those college courses?
So we will talk a little bit about that when we talk about Achievement and Integration because that's one of our goals, is to look at students earning a C or higher. That is our, you know, we are looking at grades across our whole system. I know that tonight, but we can look even further into it.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Stotson?
In regards to the, you know, the testing that third graders have to take, and you kind of touched on that we don't only use the MCA because not all kids are good at sitting at a computer all day. And, you know, some kids get the test done faster and others takes longer. And it's just, it can be hard for some kids to take that test that way. I personally am not the biggest fan of them. I understand why we have to do them. What are some of our other measures we do? You know, because if a kid doesn't do well on that, it doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't able to read or understand it, but they're sitting in front of a computer. And it's, you know, I mean, not everybody handles those kinds of tests properly. So what are some other ways that we measure to make sure that that child is learning and is able to read? And like what other sources do we utilize?
So we have our FastBridge screeners that we give three times a year. There, I mentioned the early reading, early math. As you move up in grade level, they change over to an adaptable assessment that meets the student where they're at in answering the questions. And they, they touch on all five areas of literacy, whereas the MCA is predominantly a comprehension assessment around our standards. And so also keep in mind, MCA is given in the late spring, whereas our FastBridge assessments we give in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And so we are able to look at data as students progress throughout the year. And because we give that screener K8, we are able to look at how students progressing through those skill sets over time. So that's one of our main sort of universal assessments. Our classroom teachers also give lots of formative assessments around literacy and reading skills and reading concepts. And they are able to take that information and tailor the instruction for the students, reading groups, reading groups, other things like that around those, around those concepts. In addition, we have with our literacy curriculum, the Benchmark Assessments, Benchmark Assessment System, sorry. We have, there's an assessment that many of our teachers give. That's kind of a, the idea behind it is you determine what the instructional reading level of that student is. And then in addition to identifying instructional reading level, kind of where they're at in terms of challenge and ability to read on their own. And that's, I describe it as kind of a conversation, like they're reading with the teacher, they read to the teacher, the teacher reads with them some of those pieces. And then in addition to sort of the base FastBridge screeners, we have a fluency assessment that we give three times a year where the student reads to a reader and we can kind of see how they're progressing in terms of reading fluency that way. That's just a taste, but we have other assessments that we give.
Dr. Masur?
That was an exhaustive answer, and I'm impressed by all the data you collected. I have a simple-minded question to your exhaustive answer. With the goal, we're stuck with the measurements of the MCA.
Yep.
And we all know how limited that can be. Is that written in whatever, from the state? Or is that something we imposed on ourselves?
So the state requires us to have a goal. And it requires us to have a goal that, or an assessment that they, that they approve.
They recognize it.
Right, that they recognize. They do recognize the FastBridge assessments. But because the FastBridge assessments are around screening and are around growth, it's really difficult to have a district-wide goal when we're really looking at, focused on student growth, student individual growth around those goals. So we've shied away from using FastBridge as our goal base. There aren't a lot of other options from the state right now.
Good answer. Sad.
Thank you, Dr. Masur. Other, Ms. Boyd?
Yeah, I just had a comment because this is what just hurts me about the MCA is it doesn't show growth. But each year when you're looking at those things, you are not looking at the same cohorts. It's a completely different group of students. The growth factor seems to me to be the most important thing because we have students who are still learning, you know, English is a second language or what we have, those kinds of situations. And that growth is what's the most important. If there's no growth, then you know there's an issue. But if you're seeing lots of growth, you can still have lower MCA score, but you're seeing exponential growth. Those things don't assess that, they don't show those things. But I know we have other exhaustive assessments that you went through, so.
That's a very good point that you bring out about the fact that from year to year, our third grade MCA proficiency rate is a completely different for those students. And so we use that with a grain of salt, right? We look at that information as a holistic kind of dipstick as to where we're at. But our principals and our school leaders look at a wide variety of information, including how the cohorts perform on MCA's as time goes on. So the third graders in 2019, how did they perform? Well, they didn't take it in 2020. But the fourth graders in 2021, how they perform as fifth graders in 2022. So that is definitely something that we look at. It's just not reflected in our World's Best Workforce school.
And I think ultimately, parents want their kids to be literate, and we want that for their students as well. And so how do we get better at communicating all of the measures that Melinda mentioned and helping people understand what they mean and then what MCA means? Because it is hard to understand when you hear different, you know, what, when people are media or what people are talking about around the MCA to understand the importance of it as a parent when you're thinking, what does my student know? And what should I be worried about in terms of skills as they are progressing through our system? And that really is the work that we're focused on this year, about making sure we're really clear. And these are the important measures that we're communicating in a way that our families are receiving it and that they understand it because it is really important to understand where your students are.
Yeah, it's a messy task. But because for some students, comprehension is going to be better than phonetically, right? So some students might be able to phonetically look at words and think, but reading, sitting at a test at a computer and reading through something and then being able to go back and answer the questions to make sure that they comprehend it, but can be totally different for, and then we could even get into how math and, you know, some of us are better at math and some of us are better at reading. Yeah, I wish there was a better system, but I'm proud of all the work that you guys do for this. So thank you. And having Melinda added on to the team is a great asset, so.
Other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Now we'll move on to our two-minute integration.
Good evening, school board members, parents, community members, students, once again. We are back. It's a 37-minute hiatus.
We saved the best for last.
Go town! All right, the two-minute integration plan has been around since 1995. The NAACP sued the state of Minnesota for its aggravating boundaries. And due to that, became the Achievement and Integration Funding or Program or Aid. And at that time, it's had different iterations of titles, Decipogation, Integration Aid, and now Achievement and Integration Aid. But I like to think that this work is an extension of Brown v. Board of Education. And again, the purpose of Achieving Integration is to create racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create learning environments that are equitable for all students, and reduce, and we like to try to work towards eradication of any racial, ethnic, or socioeconomic gaps, learning gaps. And there are a couple of ways that you can receive this funding. And what we did is we highlighted the ways that we receive this funding, in particular, three. We are racially, we have a racially identifiable school, which is Willamette Elementary, meaning that we have more than 20% of a protected class in the percentage. So it was like, you know, 65, 35 students of color, 65% of students of color, 35% white students. So that makes us racially identifiable, and that is how we receive our aid. Thus, we are to have programs that have goals attached to Achieving Integration. So when you think of our goals, think of them in two ways. We're going to start with the macro first, or we're going to start with the micro second. Macro, meaning the entire district. And micro, meaning our racially identifiable. And micro, meaning our racially identifiable school, which is Willow Lane, once again, right? And as we think about some of the positions in the last thirty eight minutes ago when I was here, when talked about the educational equity specialist, as well as the family engagement specialist, they're not only in alignment with the strategic plan, but they're in alignment with the work of achievement. Okay? So our first goal is to achieve by the year twenty two, twenty three, ninety percent of our Latinx students graduation rate. And again, remember as stated by my dear colleague, dear Dr. Fiero, that we're always a year behind in our data aggregation, collection and interpretation. Thus, currently we are sitting at a seventy six percent Latinx graduation rate. And while it is not where we want it to be, we're going to be still working tirelessly to achieve in the next three years, the goal of ninety six percent. Now we'll move on.
I think it's important to note when I mentioned the implementation of the BAR program as well. The BAR program not only impacts our overall graduation rate, they absolutely have data to support closing predictable gaps that exist in schools around graduation rate. And so if you haven't had a chance to look into some of the data around BAR, it's one of the few things that has a lot of research. It's been through American Institute of Research for education. There's quite, it's really exciting work that they're doing, so.
Let me, let me add on to that as well as working with some of our school leaders. We are doing some intentional racialized affinity family groups to assure working with our Latinx families, any concerns or ways we can support and hear back and ways to better support the students. So that we can not only provide the highest level of education, but assure that we can make that ninety six percent goal by the year twenty two, twenty three. All right, another goal is to ensure that any rigorous course are African American or black identifying students receive seventies or hundred percent, or a hundred percent of our students receive a C or higher that identify as black. And great news to report that we have eighty five percent of our black students receiving a C or higher in their coursework. So by twenty twenty two, twenty three, our goal was a hundred percent. And we are moving greatly towards that goal of a hundred percent. And again, once we reach a hundred percent, we will not be satisfied there. Because at that point, we'll be talking about how do we sustain this level of achievement for African American students receiving a C or higher in their rigorous coursework.
Well, Dr. Arcan, that would be the work that we're looking at. And we probably should streamline our work. We're obviously trying to get more specific. But rigorous coursework is the same phrase that we used for the potentially college credit earning, which I still have to get used to that phrase.
And as the research says, cultural responsive teaching and pedagogy is instrumental and imperative to increasing all students' student achievement. We want to make sure that all our staff, a hundred percent of our educators, are equipped with these new skills to be able to employ in the schools for our students. And we were going to use the school year twenty twenty to collect our baseline data. But due to the interruption, the realities of COVID, it just wasn't feasible to be able to do that. I say that not as an excuse, but as in reality. And we are looking at this year to create a baseline to assure that all our teachers are equipped with this new technical skill to employ to our students, which is cultural responsive teacher and pedagogy.
Well, and this goal is interesting because it is actually more complex than it may be sounds because we first have to define what exactly would be something that would measure that students have access to a culturally responsive teacher and then be able to collect our baseline data. So it is complicated work. Another thing to note is that as part of achievement and integration, it was added that you have to have a goal around either increasing the diversity of your, of your educators, meaning that they represent our student body and/or how do you make the educators that are serving students better equipped at making sure they can reach each and every student? And so we absolutely internally have a goal, as my colleague Matt Monz talked about, about continuing to have our educators represent the students that we serve in our district. And so we wanted to add this goal so that we could figure out internally how we measure what that means to have teachers who are culturally responsive.
And, and not to put another comma in, to assure that we're in alignment with some of the needs of our teachers as cultural competency is one of the requirements. So this puts everything in kind of alignment. And that's some of the work that Dr. G, sorry, Dr. Gillespie was talking about, about the systems accountability. Everything that we do makes sense and is a scoping sequence. One step helps the next step and we just continue building upward. All right, so as we think about those three goals, those three goals were sent imperative to the macro level. This is what we're going to do for the entire system. And now we're going to be going into goals that are the micro. We speak to Willow Lane, which is our racially isolated.
Before we go into there, can we open it up? I know we have a couple of questions. So Ms. Ellison has a question.
I just have a real quick question. As far as teacher licensure in the state goes, cultural competency is one of the requirements for relicensure, correct?
Yep.
So, okay, so I, because that's what you were saying, Dr. Davis, is it really intersects and aligns with what's going on at the state and that what we're doing here. Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions regarding, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Davis.
I was just going to say, under the leadership of Dr. Superintendent Wayne Kerstman check, as he thought about this department, as he thought about my position, as he thought about what he put underneath the supervision of achievement and integration, being in compliance, but also being in alignment with the state's work towards equity, as well as the district's work and strategic plan towards equity also coexists in alignment. So everything is purposeful, everything is intentional, everything coexists. There's intersectionality between everything.
Other, Dr. Arcan?
So my, my question would be, as we get our, our teachers trained in our cultural responsive teaching, I'm assuming then the next steps would be that, that you, that administrators could identify that in walkthroughs and then it will be actual part of their yearly evaluation.
You're correct. Yep, this, this year we'll work with our teacher development and evaluation committee to re, to relook at our evaluation tool and all of that. Again, to make sure things are aligned so that we're supporting and giving quality feedback.
The only thing that I'd add to that is we already have some of those walkthrough protocols.
Yep.
So we do have the protocols now. There's different things depending and kind of building or create, you know, level initiative. And so that won't be new to us, but we are looking to redefine those walkthroughs.
And really what I anticipate we will see is that we're bringing clarity to it, but we absolutely are not starting in terms of professional development for our teachers.
Thank you. Okay, other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
All right, so now we're in a portion of the racially isolated, identifiable school, which is Willow. Some of their goals, and they have three goals as well. And the first one was around when Dr. Fiero talked about this literacy fast track, fast fluency assessment. So we want to make sure that a hundred percent of our students at Willow are reading above grade level. And currently, we are at forty six percent. And again, we are early in the process with a reality via pandemic COVID nineteen interrupting learning to some degree, not fully, but to some degree, which has put us at a forty six percent rate, but we're still working in steadfast to our year of twenty two, twenty three to achieve our goal. And we also, what is not mentioned up there, we also had transition of leadership within that timeframe as well. So our dear colleague, Dr. Principal Chris Oji retired and there was new leadership from Principal Munir in that timeframe as well. Again, I don't use these things as excuses. There are realities that make sometimes slow down the work in the, in the speed that we're trying to go in the direction of faster. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
I think as a principal, when like Dr. Fiero talked about at the district level, as we talk about across our whole system what the goals are. But as a principal, you absolutely are, are talking in a hundred percent almost always when you're looking at skills. And so when we set this goal, we knew that we had a long way to go, but really felt confident not only in the work that was happening at Willow Lane, but also the systemic work that would support it. So it's all what Dr. Fiero talked about in our work around systems of support. And so we look forward to seeing some large gains for our students at Willow.
Dr. Gillespie, can I stop you, Dr. Davis, once again? Mr. Chapman has a question.
Do we know offhand what the, I mean, here it's forty six percent for the twenty, twenty to twenty one school year. Do we know what it was for the nineteen, twenty school year as far as?
Offhand, I don't, but I could get that information.
Yeah, I'd like to understand.
Sure.
And right now, just so you know, it's, it's, we're implementing a new system that'll make it a lot easier for schools and our educators to have that data at their fingertips right now. Dr. Fiero has to work for magic, but we're, we're working that data, literacy and data manipulation and ease so that it'll be easier for everyone to grab.
And, and just that, this is a good opportunity to do a shout out to David Alexson, who does help support a lot of the data, information from our student information system that I take and, and work with. So I just wanted to give a little shout out to David Alexson.
Thank you. And our second goal is consistent with our macro level goal, which we saw in the first section, is making sure that all the students, the teachers and educators at Willow Lane, a hundred percent have the cultural responsive pedagogy and teaching technical skill professional development. And again, due to the COVID interruption last year, it has been slowed down. Again, slowed down is not stopped. And we are working to assure that we can hit this achievement, not just to be hitting goals, but really because it influences the learning of our students district wide in that Willow. And then our last goal is, did you go around?
Yeah, you got it.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't. Our last goal is to really speak to a lot of the conversation that we've had, spoken to the achievement side, but the integration work still also has to occur. So this particular goal is centered around creating integrated learning environments, meaning working intra, so we may pair with Otter, we may pair with Unica in creating an integrated learning environment. But we can also work inter, and that's part of our, being a part of Equity Alliance, pair us up with other school districts, maybe Roseville, to create inter-district relationships and learn experiences. So a learning experience as it relates to, and I'm just making something up, as it relates, relates to literacy, we could have some weekly pit pal via email correspondence and then meet four times throughout the year with students from a different school and create this learning environment. Does that make sense? So again, that was interrupted through COVID because there are spacing and flexible learning models and just being cautious and being mindful leaders that this is not the time to be trying to create integrated learning experiences. So it's also important for us to understand that achievement integration plan is also three years and the integration plan has to be aligned to the world's best workforce. And like the world's best workforce, the achievement integration plan is in the second year. Right, second year. And the first year was COVID.
All right, thank you very much. I will now open it up if there's any questions or comments anybody would like to make. Dr. Arcan?
Yeah, you know, when we look at that literacy goal for Willow Lane and that forty six percent, that's a huge lift. Doesn't mean we shouldn't do it just because it's hard. The thing I want to remind us all that those formatives are really important and we need to celebrate each step of the way on this, you know, because those are also big steps for our staff and our students. And that's going to be important piece to get there, that we continually let them know how successful they are.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arcan. Others, questions, comments? Okay, thank you all very much. Really appreciate the update and appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you very much. Tonight, on tonight's agenda, we have two operational items. C one, which is the certification of the twenty twenty one payable twenty twenty two for both preliminary property tax levy. Mr. Wald, I assume that this is going to be you, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. And Andy Johnson, our director of finance. So annually, the board has asked to certify the preliminary pay twenty two property tax levy. And we certify that to the auditors of Anoka, Ramsey and Washington County. So these are taxes payable in twenty twenty two for the twenty two, twenty three school year. The administration recommends the school board certify the maximum levy as provided by state law. By doing so, there may be adjustments, sometimes MDE updates a report that will change it just small ways. Or if there's changes that the district recognizes we need to make, there'll be some opportunity to do that if the board certifies a maximum levy at this time. The auditors from each county will send out the preliminary tax statements in mid-November and those numbers will be reflected on our approval tonight. And then after, after our truth and taxation hearing, which we are required to hold in December, then the final levy will be set and that will, it will receive a second tax statement, which you're used to receiving if you own property in any of these three counties, any county in Minnesota. So the tax levy for taxes payable in twenty two is fifty six million nine hundred eighty seven thousand six hundred seventy four. That's a decrease of eighty eight thousand one hundred forty five dollars over the previous year. On a three hundred thousand dollar home, that will reflect the decrease of about two point four percent in property taxes. Of course, things that can adjust, that can change that for individual property owners would be changes in their property value. Some, some things people make an improvement to their property or their property gets assessed this particular year, they see an increase in their property value and that can, that can change that for sure.
Okay.
So our recommended, recommendation is to approve the maximum for the twenty twenty one payable, twenty twenty two proposed preliminary property tax levy.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's been a motion by Mr. Chapman. Is there a second?
Second. Go ahead, March.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. Any discussion regarding the action? And I know that you said that, so I just want to clarify that this is an annual event that comes in front of this board, typically happens in September every year.
That's correct.
Thank you.
It's required to be completed by September thirtieth.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Boyd?
I kind of wanted to point out, the point when we did this, the ten year, it was, doing this was going to keep, you were going to do it such a way that was going to keep property taxes stable as we're doing this. And this does that.
Right, and that, as we make adjustments, and we'll, we'll get into the LTFM in just a moment, but as we make adjustments to the levy, one of our goals is, is to make sure we do our best to keep property taxes as level as possible and so people won't see a big jump from year to year in that taxes. There are many factors that cause a levy to adjust. And the debt plan that we developed keeps that portion of it from fluctuating too greatly. But there may be a year where there could be something else that causes it to fluctuate. So as it relates to facilities, yes, that's the plan that we had developed. The calculation for the property taxes, by the way, is a thirty nine page calculation with five thousand lines of calculation on it, so.
Got it.
We have, and a culture can dig through each line as, as need be to get through them.
It's the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen, honestly. Super fun.
It's the entire month of September for Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
And yours.
Is there any other discussion? Here in our C and N, this will require a roll call vote. Would ask the court please read the roll.
Melinda?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Deloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Wald. We're now moving to our next operational item, action on the revised ten year long facility maintenance plan.
Yeah, so annually, as we approve our levy and do our best to keep taxes as level as possible, one of the things we do is make adjustments to our LTFM based on what our LTFM. one of the things we do is make adjustments to our LTFM based on what our LTFM needs are across the district. And this year, we'll make a, we approved the LTFM levy in July and an adjustment in September will be at three point, what is it, Andy, three point nine six million for FY twenty two, twenty three. It's about, about, it's exactly one million eighty eight thousand eight hundred five dollars and thirty eight cents below last year's levy for LTFM.
Below, you said?
Yeah.
Thank you. You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's been a motion to approve, is there a second, motion by Ms. Thompson, excuse me. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Belloyd, any discussion regarding the recommended action? Mr. Chapman?
Just a question, how much below was it?
One million eighty eight thousand?
Is there any other discussion? Here, in our seat, none, this will require a roll call vote.
Malin?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Belloyd?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye.
All right, with that, the motion passes. And I want to thank you all for putting up with the long evening, I know there was a lot to digest tonight. Want to thank all the staff and everybody that presented for the work that they presented tonight. There's a lot of great things going on in our school district and I really appreciate all of you. I speak for all of my colleagues, I think we really appreciate everything that you guys do for all of our students and staff. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Malin, I move for adjournment.
There's been a motion by Dr. Arcan, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, we are adjourned.